So I'm going to call meeting to order. And so the first thing is to review and approve the agenda. And I don't think we have any changes to the agenda as they are, as it is. Does anyone have any information different than that?
No, Miss Madam Mayor, I just suggest that we flip, that we do the meeting with legislators before the alternate transportation issue.
That is.
So we do number eight.
Totally fine. Oh, I see. So flip seven and eight. Yep, that makes sense. I like that. Yes, Jack?
I had a question about the about the item about Gerton Park. It was pointed out to me earlier this evening that when we last took this up, the motion I made was to delay consideration for four weeks. And then we had, we changed the meeting dates for November. So we're only three weeks out from that now. And I gather that there was some discussion of it at the homelessness task force meeting. But today, I think, maybe yesterday, but I gather that it wasn't concluded. So it makes me wonder if we shouldn't take this off and put it to our next meeting. So the people, the public input that we're looking for will have had the full time that we were looking for. I apologize for not mentioning it earlier, but as we said, it was just pointed out to me today that this was a potential issue.
Yeah, your point is well taken. My only hesitation in taking it off is that I know Paige is planning to join us this evening, and I think it would be at least valuable to hear from her, even if we don't do anything further with it. Is that, is that okay with you there, Jack?
Yeah, it's fine with me. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, anything? Well, and if Paige doesn't show up, then maybe we can, we can table it for another day.
Paige asked me to.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments on the agenda? Okay. All right, so. Objection, we will consider the approved. So on to business and appearances. This is an opportunity for a number of the, to address the council on any topic that is otherwise not on our agenda. And so that if you have something you'd like to share with us, please state your name and where you live and try to keep your comments to two minutes or less or so. And are there folks who would like to speak? I see Elizabeth, you would like to speak. I'm afraid my internet is a little spotty, so.
Be a miracle if you could bear with me.
If it gets to be too bad, then maybe we can have Donna lead things.
Okay, can everybody, can anybody hear me? Yes?
Um, yes. Before you go.
Yeah, go ahead.
Before you go, is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Yeah, Steve Whitaker.
Okay.
Dayton Kreitz here with the Complete Streets Committee. I would mind taking a moment.
Okay.
Yes, and Alex Chernomazov. I haven't seen the original agenda, but I wanted to add some considerations regarding the new alternate parking.
Okay, great. So anyone, anyone else? I have you for so far.
I should mention my, my column is around an agenda item around the active transportation fund. So if it can wait till then, I can wait or I can speak.
Oh, yes, let's do that. Because if it's pertinent to that item, let's do it together with that discussion. Is that okay?
Understood.
Okay, super. All right. So, all right, Elizabeth, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, and you can hear me now, yes?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, my God, it's a miracle. I'm having issues with my sound on Zoom. Anyway, I'm excited to let you know that this week there is an onboard survey being done on the GMT routes, Montpelier Hospital Hill and Montpelier Circulator. And I just wanted to let you know that that's going on. If you know of any current riders, I am going to forward information to all the members of the council. I don't think we've done that yet with a tiny URL link for the Survey Monkey survey and also a phone number where people can call in for the survey. So it's exciting. People have actually been calling to do the survey. We've learned a lot and we'll report on that at another meeting. So just to let you know. Oh, and wait a moment. The reason we're doing it is because on-demand microtransit, and Donna and Connor will report to this later, but I'm just going to do it in case anybody doesn't know about this. On-demand, what was formerly known as on-demand microtransit is now My Ride by GMT, and it will be starting January 4th. And we're very lucky to have Andy Perschlik on our, the, what is now known as the My Ride Community Advisory Group. So there is a lovely group of people who are working very hard to affect this transition. So we're very lucky in Montpelier.
And just on that topic, just so everyone knows, council and everyone else, GMT will be on our next meeting agenda December 2nd to update us on that service. Anyone who's interested?
That's fabulous. Okay, Stephen, go ahead.
I want to just point out that your public restrooms, the library is now closed again. I suspect that the executive order is going to necessitate rabble-rousers being closed. City Hall is closed. That your public bathrooms, collectively, you're either cruel or oblivious or both. But it, the fact that people cannot find a place to use a bathroom is a real problem. And you need to address it. You need to address it at every meeting until you solve it. Secondly, I raised this at the homelessness task force meeting this morning, that the charge that was given to that committee 15, 16 months ago, they have failed to do any of what they were charged to do. Their sole accomplishment is a couple of porta-johns with no handwashing facilities. So you really, you know, it was, I refrained from saying this last time, that to delegate them to address and solve the dilemma of what role the pocket park should have or what should multiple of them, et cetera, is somewhat farcical. When it was appointed, we recommended that it not be service providers, but service providers be interviewed by the task force so that vested interests and those invested in status quo would not be controlling the meetings. Now you have Good Samaritan, Another Way, Center for Independent Living, the Police Department maintaining status quo and not fulfilling their mission. My recommendation is dissolve it and base it, base the music as the city obligation to deal with that issue because it's not getting done a year and a half later, and it's a travesty of bad governance. Additionally, well, that's enough for now.
Thank you, Stephen. And just to follow up on that, you know, we had made a list of publicly available restrooms. That was pre the most recent closures due to COVID. I wonder if we could update that list with that. I'm seeing Cameron shaking her head there. Is that something that seems doable?
Yes, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you so much.
It's still a useless effort. You've got an emergency problem going on with a COVID pandemic and people cannot wash their hands. Anywhere, there's no bathroom in Shaw's, there's no bathroom, anyway. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Stephen. All right. Alec, oh, yes, go ahead, Bill.
You had two other people waiting for general business.
Yeah, so Dayton is, I'm going to hold off on his comment. So Alex, I think you are up.
Okay, hello. So my, and I'm not 100% familiar with the overall format. My, the general concern I have is the new alternate parking that requires people to move their vehicle every day side to side. And like, the concern is multifaceted. Kind of somewhat water under the bridge is how it was communicated. I only learned it when it was already enacted. And I know, in retrospect, I found a single post on the front porch forum. And I'm not, I left social media some years ago. It was just too much, I was trying to retain my sanity. And the price is not being able to, and learn about things like this. I would have joined the early discussions. But again, at this point, it's water under the bridge. But kind of hopefully, something could be done better going forward. But realistically, speaking of going forward, the concerns, specific concern I have are multifaceted. One is the overall amount of carbon output that moving, especially since the rule says that it will, that vehicles must be moved in the evening after 5 o'clock. So it's, in the winter, we're talking about colder time, everything will take longer. So like, I actually made a little experiment. I took a half an hour, I drove all around town using my electrically charged car and counted cars and parked on the streets. I made some estimates, like how long it takes to move the car, compared, like average car efficiency. So long story short, at the most optimistic estimate, it would generate 11,000 pounds of carbon compared to the same, compared to city vehicles even waiting. Like I remember, I know the argument is that the city vehicles that doing plowing have to wait for the cars to get towed at night. And like, I even took into consideration like some excessive number of towings that would be done. So long story short, and if it, we, from carbon point of view, like I'm happy to share this, my calculations. And also, it would cost all, every single person who has to move their car, one day of their life through the winter, like over the winter, to move their cars. So I realize, I understand exactly the problem that we are trying to solve. And I'm not saying that we should not solve it. But I am not sure if this is the best way of solving. So from one, from a little bit of Googling I did, I see that it was inspired by Madison, Wisconsin. And looks like they are already rolling this program back. Like, so just, so that's a brief feedback I have. Happy to elaborate a little more and share the spreadsheet.
Alex, I appreciate your calculations, that you took the time to make some calculations about this and looking at it from a carbon perspective. I would love to see them, and I'd love to chat with you about, about those calculations. So if you get the chance to send them along, I would be very interested. So fodder for further discussion, sound all right?
I'm good. I am, chat is disabled. I was going to paste the link to the Google spreadsheet into the chat, but it's off.
Yeah, go ahead and just email it to me.
Will do.
We'll follow up. Awesome, all right, well, thank you. Was there anyone else? And Cameron, are you seeing any hands of anyone?
Not right now.
Okay.
Something I meant to add, just quick thing. As a possible solution going forward, I wonder if, like, to solve the problem that, I'm assuming mainly we're talking about the nightly budget over time. So maybe it could be that people move cars side to side only when necessary. So we kind of follow the model of the sea of how it used to be. So we, we announce a parking ban. And at this point, people begin moving cars side to side. So this way, it could be done during the day and we avoid overtime at night.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. All right. So moving on, so we, just to be clear, so this, this next item, appointment to the Montpelier, or as a, to have a Montpelier member to the Capstone board is really more of a recommendation from this group. And I see that there are some folks here who are, who have applied for that and would love to give folks an opportunity to introduce themselves and discuss their, their interest in helping to serve Capstone in this way. And yes, we'll go, we'll go from there. So I, I see that Abby White and Gabriel Legunes are both here. Am I missing anyone else? Who, Jack, yeah?
Mayor, before we hear from the candidates, I see that Sue Minter, the executive director of Capstone, is here. And I would like to give her an opportunity to say something if she wants to.
I think that's a great idea. Sue, would you like to say anything about this?
Thanks, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I really appreciate your taking time to focus on kind of our mission is to really, we have a board that is what we call a tripartite board. So one-third of our members to our board are the clients we serve. The participants is the word we use. One-third comes from the private sector and one-third comes from the public sector. And we also, as you may know, serve Orange County, Lemoyle County, and Washington County. We have four different members of the public sector. And right now, we have a member representing the city of Barry. We have a member of the state legislature from Orange, Representative Jay Hooper. We have a member from Lemoyle County who is appointed by Representative David Jacovoni. And I was hoping and reached out to the mayor to see if we could engage the city in sort of being represented and being a part of our work and our mission through this. So, you know, what we have done is worked in tandem and reached out to some folks. I'm happy to see whoever applies. And I do want to say that our board has met with Abby because she expressed an interest already before even there was an opening on our board. So we have met with her on a couple of occasions, and she has visited our board. But we obviously will welcome other applicants, but we'll look to you for a recommended applicant to serve on our board to represent you and your interests. And also to be a liaison to you so that you learn more about what we are trying to do on behalf of the vulnerable citizens and residents of Montpelier. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, well, so we can go in either order here. So why don't we, why don't we start with Gabriel? Would you introduce yourself and tell us about your interest in serving on the Capstone board?
Yeah, great, thanks for having me here tonight. And appreciate, I mean, Abby sounds like she's very interested. I'm sure she's a great candidate. I just love the work that's being done by Capstone. And Sue, grateful for your leadership there. I've come to know Capstone really through service at the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. We did a grant last year for several of the community action agencies for clothing drive. And Sue's team received a lot of that and was able to distribute that over the last year. I'm really grateful for that, just so much of the work they do. You know, over the last few years, up until 2018, I was in the board at the Veterans Place. And so that homelessness problem that we have, you know, working through that, just again, great partnerships that we've seen there. It's a great pause. And when I saw the post looking for somebody to represent Montpelier, I thought, well, I'd love to join that effort and help. I'm a financial advisor, I work with Edward Jones, how to practice here, until just recently moved down to Barry. Have a legal background. And anyway, I'd love to help if there's a need. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you. And Abby, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. My name is Abby White. Good to be with you here. I know many of you, I'm, I'm a Montpelier resident. Obviously, I have two children in the Montpelier school systems, one that's in the middle school, one that's in the elementary school. And for my day job, when I'm not being a mother, I work for the Vermont Land Trust, and I'm the vice president for Strategic Communications there. So I became familiar with Capstone in previous work when I was working on weatherization and really trying to advance both access and resources for weatherization throughout the state. And had a great opportunity to work with Sue and her team, Paul Zabriskie, over there. And just became deeply familiar with the work that they're doing on so many different fronts to combat poverty in our region. So became aware, interested, and just really an admirer of the organization and of Sue and her leadership. You know, later, I would say over the last year, I thought a lot more about Capstone as we saw what was happening in our community and the ravages of the pandemic and the economic fallout that, that we continue to, to see. And the gross disparity that that's not just revealed, but deepened. And I truly believe that poverty is just one of the, if not the most important issue that we need to address. It's at the root of so many other causes in society, whether that's climate related, whether it's, you know, education, healthcare. And I see Capstone as an organization that's really leading on that in our region. And like many of you, this year has, has been just one for the record books and one, I think, that's forced all of us to just think more deeply about what am I doing? And what can I be doing more? How can I deepen my commitment? And so I reached out to Sue and expressed my desire to get more involved just because I see the need and I see the opportunity for, for more of us to get involved and be active participants in this democracy. Because if, if we don't, then who will? So that summarizes my interest. And thank you again for the opportunity and just look forward to next steps.
Great, thank you. Any councilors have questions? Donna, go ahead.
I'd just like to comment that Abby was one who put some really clear, relatable words in your narrative and your application. I mean, the seven people applied all have amazing resumes, have made contributions to our community. But I really felt that your statement of why you wanted to serve on this committee really laid out the understanding of its purpose. I was very impressed. And so I hope, one, I congratulate you on that wording, wherever it takes you. But on, also to Sue, we have seven people here. So I hope you take advantage of somehow finding a place for these people to help you because they're all very, very qualified. Thank you.
I want to just chime in to say, there is room for help in many ways. So I am thrilled to hear that there are seven applicants. And Gabriel, your, your, your investment in us through this warm clothing drive has been incredible. Your financial background, I know that if there are seven people that want to be a part of Capstone, there's room for you. There probably is only room for one member of the formal board, but we have many committees and many activities, and I would love the chance to engage all of you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? From the council? Okay, so, Jack, go ahead.
Pursuant to one VSA, section 313A3, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of considering an appointment of a public official.
Excellent, we got a couple of seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Okay, so the councilors will be leaving this call, but the call will stay open. And all right, we will.
I'd like to make the motion that we ask the Capstone to consider appointing Amy White to their Board of Directors and Gabriel Longzies as an alternate.
Second.
And you meant, you meant Abby?
Abby.
Yes. And, okay. All right, sorry, was there a second? Jack, okay, there was a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? All right, well, we want to thank both of you for your interest and your time. And certainly, keep us posted as to what's going on with Capstone and how we can be involved. That the work of Capstone is just so important, especially now. We're so grateful for, for everything Capstone does. So please pass along our gratitude to everyone there. All right, thank you. And we also want to encourage all of the other applicants to consider getting involved. And, and as Sue said, there are lots of ways that people can, can be involved with Capstone. So thank you again.
Thank you all so much, and we'll be sure to reach out to every applicant. Thank you.
Super, thank you. Okay. So just to revisit the Gerton Pocket Park item, is there anyone here for the Gerton Pocket Park?
Steve Whitaker, if you take it up, I'm going to speak to it.
Would you be opposed to us tabling it?
Not at all.
Okay, great, thank you. So I think we'll, we'll just push that off to another meeting. All right, so. Meeting with our, our delegation. So we are so grateful that you are here. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us as we chat with you about our, what our priorities would be for this session. And we, do you want to make this a discussion? And see what your impressions are for this, this coming, coming session? So we had a committee of the council come up with priorities. And I'm going to turn things over to any member of that committee to kick us off here.
I don't mind kicking it off. I think maybe Bill would be best to go through the whole agenda there since there's a lot of staff recommendations to flesh out. But I would just say, I'm very grateful for the delegation to come to a meeting like this. And I think it's more important than ever during the pandemic, that that close tie between municipal government and the state government. And I think the genesis of this was, you know, we just realized we don't know what we don't know is happening under the dome there. And it's, it's really great to be able to rely on all of you to let us know of any opportunities we should come up for. Just an example, when we heard one of the colleagues in the Senate there might be looking at cutting pilot funds, you know, Bill sent an email to all three of our senators, who I think every one of them got back within like an hour to Bill, just to set the record straight that this wasn't happening. And something like that is so important, I think. So as we go into the next biennium, you know, I'm sure COVID is going to continue dominating. So as we go into the next biennium, you know, I'm sure COVID is going to continue dominating. And, you know, looking at the gap in our budget and the difficult decisions we're going to have to be making in the next few weeks. Any opportunities to draw down state funds to sort of fill those gaps? And meet the services at a time when people need them most are going to be so appreciated. So a lot of this legislative agenda is duplicative of last year, I think. There are some new things in it, though. But yeah, just wanted to, on behalf of the committee, thank you so much for spending the time coming in here tonight.
Just to follow up with that, just more of a process. As you recall, we met with you all this in the spring, I guess, or near the end of the session. And decided that that timing wasn't great. And we had our laundry list, and what we had agreed at that time with you was, we would work up some ideas, run them past the council, and then have a conversation with you folks about the council's ideas. What were top on your list, what was, you know, if there were things on there that just were never going to happen, to let us know now. And also if there were things we should have on, and then after meeting with you, finalize our actual formal agenda, so that it's really done collaboratively with you. So the council appointed a committee of Lauren, Connor, and Dan, with my, he is the staff help. And our group drafted the initial list, the city council as a whole looked at it, made a couple of changes. And then the staff list at the end wasn't really run through the city council. Those were just things that the staff was tracking, those that chose to offer staff suggestions. Just because some of them are more technical in nature. So I don't have, I wasn't planning to read through the whole list unless people want me to. I assume you all have it, and if there's anything specific people want to ask about or comment on, I think we're interested in hearing and having a dialogue.
I would mention one or two. That's okay.
Yes, go ahead, Senator Polina.
I think your list is good. I don't have any problems with it. Obviously, most of it involves money, and that's a problem in general. Some of us were willing to find ways to raise revenue, and I'm one of those people, I think we need to raise revenue to meet our needs. But I think any of these things are going to be difficult, given the financial situation, and we just have to be aware of that. We're not sure, of course, whether or not there's going to be federal money. I mean, we have to assume there's going to be some federal money, because, I mean, as bad as things are in Washington, you have to presume that they're going to come up with something. I mean, I guess there's part of me that wouldn't be surprised if they did not. But it's just, I can't accept the fact that they would actually do nothing, so I'm hoping for the best. I wanted to mention two things, though, that are sort of on your list, just to keep in mind. We did have, in terms of the, I forget how it's phrased on your list, but giving local municipalities more power, more decision-making. I forget how you refer to it, but we did have a bill last year. I think it was S106, which basically was a convoluted way of trying to allow certain communities to take more control over their local decision-making. It passed the Senate, and it's got stuck in the House Government Operations Committee. I'm not sure, but I presume we're going to take something like that up again. I mean, it's almost become something, in the Senate Government Operations Committee, it's almost become something of like a, I don't mean this in a derogatory way, but it's kind of like a joke. You know, we joke about the fact that, you know, we're making decisions for towns all the time. We're never like allowing towns to have been put into their own decision-making. So I think we will revisit that. The other thing I just want to put on the table, because you've heard from some folks from Montpelier, is the non-citizen voting charter change. And whether or not the city is interested in trying to move forward with that again. As you remember, it passed the House, it got stuck in the Senate. There would be some, there are some changes going to happen in the Senate, which might make it easier to move that through the Senate. I can't guarantee it, but I just want to make sure that if we, Mary and Andy and I have talked about it a little bit. Usually those things have to, they don't have to start in the House, but they traditionally start in the House. But we want to make sure that if we're going to do that, that you folks want to see it happen. We want to try to make it happen again. So I just put that on the table as well. So we will be doing more around trying to give municipalities some power. Not going to guarantee it's going to happen, but we're going to try. And then we'll take up the voter thing again, if folks want us to. And then the other thing is just, we'll scratch under every cushion to try to find money that we can send back to local communities. I mean, as you know, you can imagine, we all go through downtown Montpelier. We just see, it's really, it's really quiet, let's put it that way. I mean, it's really sad. And they've just told the state employees that they should be ready to work at home, I think, through March at least, is what they said. And I can't imagine what it must be like for someone who owns a restaurant in Montpelier at this point, or a cafe, or any kind of business, really. But it's just really frightening to me that these folks are going to have to, like, try to survive a handful more months without any more support. So do everything we can to get them support today, as much as we could muster, make them survive. And hopefully come out the other end of this thing, still in business.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Senator Cummings?
Okay, yeah, I think we're all going to be focused on physical and economic survival. And I think, once a vaccine becomes available, we're going to have to be doing some coordinating with the cities and towns to get as much of that vaccine out there as quickly as we can. We've been, again, trying to use every cent of federal money to target those businesses. The good news is, any business downtown, and that's a lot of them, that use NACIS Code 72. Which was new to me, I keep thinking of NCIS, but it is a tax code, it is on your tax form. And it basically, we were trying to target the hospitality industry, but that covers bars, restaurants, anyone that pays basically rooms and meals tax. And with the remaining 75 million that Joint Fiscal approved on Saturday, those businesses will be getting 100% of their unmet need. Now, unmet need is not the best form. They're basically taking last year's revenue, subtracting this year's revenue, and any grants you've gotten. And what remains is your need. It doesn't help a lot of restaurants and things that were only in business for two months last year, because they didn't have much revenue. So we're working through that. The rest of the businesses, retail, we think will be getting, right now, they've gotten a third of their unmet need. We believe we're going to be able to do 50%, so there is some financial hope out there. Again, we really need more federal funds. We're going through every cent, there will be some more money, we think, going unspent. And Joint Fiscal is meeting again Friday, and we'll probably meet one or two more times before this is done. But we know that we're going to need some more money right now for advanced testing and perhaps some surge hospitals, depending on how the virus tracks. And I think that's it. We are all looking for money. In June, I was looking at $150 million shortfall in the Ed Fund. And about $200 million in the General Fund. The Ed Fund, last time I looked, is down to only about $60 million. And there's a $30 million reserve that has to be filled in there. But we also know that we deficit spent in the Ed Fund this year, not to do a tax increase other than the 4% that the towns voted. So we're going to, we've got some ways to deal with that inter-loan borrowing and a few other things. But that will, we're hoping, everybody go out and buy something. Because the sales tax, apparently, a lot of folks spent their federal benefit buying things, large items online. And thanks to the Wayfair decision, that brought the deficit in the Ed Fund down from 150 to a mere $60 million. So we're going to be working through that. We know the schools are going to have extra costs, we know the cities have extra costs. Everybody, write somebody else's congressman, because our Congress, our delegation is all good. But we really do need some more federal money in here. It's, anything that's left on December 30th will now, by law, go into the Unemployment Fund to replenish that. Because we don't want to have to increase unemployment taxes, which would probably fall on those who have been hit the most, that had to lay off the most people. So we're trying, and I think, working together. And I am, I voted to increase income taxes twice before to protect the safety net. We're going to be looking at if there are ways to work with the tax code to find out how we can find the revenue, which we're probably going to need before we get out of this. So that's where we are. And can I say, it was really nice to be here to see the Capstone discussion, because that's how I started. So Abby White might want to be careful. I started out as the city council representative to what then was the Central Vermont Community Action Council. And that service played a big part in getting me appointed to the city council. So it was good, full circle.
Oh, that's very cool. Well, so thank you. Anyone else want to, any of the other delegation want to share?
I...
Go ahead.
I had, I didn't know if you wanted, I had a couple of questions, at least on one thing. You know, as far as my relationship to the city, I am really interested in my ride by GMT, we're now calling it, participating on that, and I really want to see that be successful. So we'll be watching that, both just because I'm interested in, and also in my position if I'm still on Transportation Committee. But one of the things listed on here was support legislation allowing a removal of red line deed restrictions, which I'm assuming Montpelier doesn't have any. But assuming you're just kind of supporting municipalities in general, if we had, for those municipalities that have those, they should just be able to take them out, take them off, and not have to go through legislative charter approval. That's what you're advocating there?
So actually, we were approached by a resident who had looked into this. And there are deeds, not only in Montpelier, but all around the state, that have that lang, still have red line language in them.
In the deed.
The courts have ruled that they're invalid, so they're not enforceable. But this particular individual and others wanted them taken out of their deed, they didn't want, and were kind of told that you just can't do that. You know, that there's a whole chain of deed title, and it was the initial deed. And it's not allowed to be, you know, basically thou shalt never mess with, you know, the deed. And certainly, and so this person wanted the city to sort of have, ask for the authority to take, or to grant authority to change deed language, and we're like, I don't think we can do this. This is something probably that has to come from the legislature, and probably has to be done statewide. So, yes, there is red line language in deeds, it's not enforceable, thankfully. But it still exists, and someone, you know, I don't blame, I wouldn't want a deed that says you can't sell it to X, Y, or Z person.
Right, oh, I get it now. I thought it was maybe the restrictions from the municipalities about the deeds. But yeah, maybe Anthony, if he's still in government ops, we could figure out a way to address that. And from the real estate days, probably has some thoughts on that, maybe. But one other thing, and I could talk to Bill offline maybe about, is the district heating system. I have interest in that, want to see it be successful and expanded. And I know there was some concerns about the contract with the state. So if we want to open that up, maybe sleeping dogs are best to lay live. But if not, I'm willing to take that on.
I'd be happy to talk to you about that. We did actually have a successful year this year, where we, you know, we brought in more money than we spent, that was good. Trying to whittle down some of our losses. I think the toughest part with expansion right now, honestly, is the price of oil. It's just a tough, you know, to ask someone to consider, you know, redoing their whole building, or even just their connection. Plus, you know, taking on, it's a big financial ask right now. Which is, of course, the exact opposite of the direction we expected to be when when this system was being put in, we were seeing nothing but straight up. So it's hanging in there, but I think, I do think some of our costs with the state could be revisited, that would be great. And particularly some of the capacity issues, interpretations of capacity that the state has raised, which I, you know, I see, you know, Mary here, we sweat a lot of blood over this. And, you know, it was not at all the way we, the interpretation now is not what we agreed to, so.
Yeah, well, I think you have a good team here, if you want to bring it up again. Between the House and Senate, we should be able to do something if we need to.
Okay, that's great to know. Well, maybe we should set up something separately on that.
And one other thing, it's not on your list, but last time we did talk, I think I was supposed to reach out to Donna at some point, but I never did, was about the dispatching. And so I don't know if Donna still is the point person on that, but I will do that if there's still an interest in talking about dispatch. Okay.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. Dan Richardson is the appointed member from the council, and I'm actually an at-large elected member of the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority Board. But I think both of us would really appreciate having a conversation with you.
Okay, great, I'll do that.
Okay.
Mayor, John Odom has his hand raised.
Okay. John, go ahead.
Oh, just a note, to make sure that, to include me in conversations about any kind of retroactive continuity of deeds. Just, you know, my impulse is, I think that's a very dangerous slippery slope, and it is the kind of thing I get invited to the legislature to talk about. So I just want to make sure we were all on the same side.
Yeah.
Just bringing it into the, oh, but as long as I've got the floor, I just want to mention to Senator Polina, I'm sure that the city will, you know, will feel the same way. But in terms of non-citizen voting, my office has been very assertive in pushing it. And, did I say irregardless? Oh, my God. Anyways, and will continue to do so, it's pretty near and dear to my heart, so.
Mary, go ahead, and then Connor, yeah.
So I won't repeat what other folks have said about our concerns about revenue and expenses other than to say, I worry about it every day. So yes, that's on my list, too. In terms of kind of the particular portfolio I carry, I'm very interested in the justice-related issues. And so the issues you all raised regarding community services, police social worker, the effects of legislation on policing, et cetera. Got it, and paying attention to it. I'm particularly interested in figuring out how we can help push support into the communities that are obviously kind of our first point of where we ought to be offering services and helping prevent folks from going deeper into the system. And so got that in my brain, and hope you'll keep me in your conversations and let me know what you're seeing in terms of actions that you would like us to be paying attention to. It would be helpful to know some about your revenue, the cities' struggles with revenue in terms of our making arguments within our respective bodies about why we need to be supporting you. I find that we're particularly in tune with issues, tax issues. Tax issues around the education fund, but tend to be somewhat less sympathetic to the burden of. Of property taxes it relates to municipal issues. Um, so just keep us in the conversation on that. Um, one of the things that's been on my list is just how y'all feel about the train. Or the railroad, um, I, I look at the pile of trash that's kind of next to Ann's house. Um, and, and very disappointed that we have seen, um, the. Change that we've seen in the railroad, so we had talked about having a conversation and never did, but. It's on my. List.
Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, I just heard several comments about the, the topics that Mary um, raised and hopefully I'll hit them all. Uh, so going back, you know, reverse order, the railroad, um, we had met. Uh, with the railroad with V Trans, uh, Senator Perchlik was actually pretty helpful with that. And um, I think when we were talking before, we were talking about. You know, they had engineering study and trying to, trying to figure this out and the next thing we do, the tracks are being put in.
Right.
And um, really, nobody knew that was coming. And I, I'm not really sure how that all happened and, and uh, so you know, any. Any, I suppose, review that you all can do to, to, to learn more about that would be great, but the fact is, it's, you know, they're done. Uh, it would be nice to see them clean up along the tracks, uh, and in fact, if you really wanted to go for big ass to get that. Rail car that's been there for thirty or forty years out, but uh, yeah, but I definitely, uh, that's been. And one thing, with regard to, uh, so I'm gonna jump around to the, the, the sort of needy population, I think what we're seeing. And, and here I'm speaking a little bit statewide, not just Montpelier, but. You know, there's been budget cutsbacks, budget cutbacks, you know, federal state for years and as the human services costs have, have diminished. They followed more and more and more and more onto, onto city government to the point where. You know, you heard Steve Whitaker talk earlier about, you know, being disappointed with our homeless task force did and, and, and you know, he's not totally wrong, I mean, not about. Individuals necessarily, but you know, we don't have the know-how, we don't have the expertise, we have the organizational infrastructure to deal with these things. Yet, it's sort of falling on us to, to figure these things out. Because the state doesn't seem to have the, the, the financial wherewithal and the capacity to, to deal with it, so I think we're just asking for. You know, and, and, and I know that the money is, is a bad situation, so I get that, but somehow, um, we, we're having growing needs and. Um, the, the sort of partnership of who does what, it seems to be eroding and it's a real concern for I think any city. Or town that has a, a cent, a community center, you know, the rural communities, it's as much of an issue, but places that have. You know, the downtowns are, are definitely feeling it. Um. Toward that end, there's one very specific thing on our list, which also you heard mentioned, and that is a public bathroom. Uh, it, it, it seems pretty, you know, small, but it's actually is an urgent need and we have spent a lot of time talking about it. Covid has certainly, you know, the state has closed its public bathrooms, the city, everyone has. Uh, but visitors who come to the city are coming to use our businesses, they're coming to visit state, they're coming to use all sorts of things. And it certainly would be a, a nice thing if perhaps we could partnership, you know, and I think on the scale of money, this is not. A giant multi-million dollar endeavor. Uh, to find some common place or two in downtown Montpelier where we could actually construct. Real bathrooms uh, for, for all people to use. Uh, and, and that is seems to be a concrete bad pun, uh, thing that we could do that could show results that would not be a big. And, and, and need a real need and, and not, uh, not be a big ticket item. Lastly, you talked about municipal revenues and again, I think it's a little bit of a different story depending on, on. Community you're in. So I'll speak just from Montpelier because uh, it isn't just the property tax, um, you know, obviously we are collecting our property taxes. Are, we're, we've seen a little bit of delinquency, it really hasn't been too bad, uh, compared to normal, it's a little bit slower. But we are concerned that, you know, the longer this goes on. About people's ability to keep paying those, uh, you know, as, as people are out of work, as their businesses suffer, as, you know, whatever happens. And certainly, you know, municipal tax rate here in Montpelier is, is high. So that's, that's just a pressure, pressure as it always is, but for us, um, you know. Senator Polina mentioned, you know, the, the sort of quietness of downtown Montpelier, that has uh, translated for us to just massive loss in parking revenue. Uh, we also rely on rooms, meals, and alcohol tax and that has dropped drastically. Uh, we rely on fees for senior center services, rec programs, all those kind of programs of people gathering and doing all these things. Those have gone off the table. Uh, so, so we have a very substantial revenue loss that isn't really just property tax. It's all the other things that make up and so. To cover that, those losses, uh, we have to raise our property tax by something like twenty cents just to be whole. And, uh, you know, I see two former mayors on here, you know how, how viable that is in, in a city. Budget conversation, that's just not, that's not on the table and nor should it be, I think, right now, so. So that's what we're up against and then we are really concerned about pilot, um. Thank you all for making sure that we were held whole this past year and, and thank you for the support on that. And we'd like to believe that's gonna happen again next year, but we all know that pilot is funded by local options taxes throughout the state. Which means sales tax, rooms, meals, and alcohol taxes, et cetera, in, in those communities that have local options taxes. So if they are all experiencing the same kind of economic activity downturn that we're seeing. It stands to reason that the fund, the pilot fund will not have the same kind of resources in it that it's had in years past. And, and so we, in terms of next, the budget we're preparing now are anticipating a shortfall in our pilot revenues based on. On that supposition, you know, we, we haven't seen hard numbers. So, so there are a list of, of revenues, now as I said. That particular pie isn't the same for everybody, I think if you're a small rural town dependent solely, really essentially only on property tax. Maybe you're doing okay, you know, you're, you're hanging in there. Um, for those communities that have, have a bigger diversity of revenue stream, particularly based on activity. Yeah, I, I think we're all really hurting, so you know, we're looking at, I mean, our, actually our team is meeting tomorrow to talk about. A one point seven million dollar budget gap. Uh, which for us is what, fifteen percent or something, thirteen percent, that, that we've got to present to the city council in a couple of weeks. So it's real and it's gonna have a big impact on services and projects and all those other things, just as it is at the state, I get it, I, I mean, I'm not. And one of the things I personally was, was hoping that we could hear was exactly what you know about the states. I've, I've gone on way too long, but I hope I answered the question.
Bill, would you just send, can you pop what the revenue losses by. Fund are, just, I don't know, on a spreadsheet or just a little way for me to see what they are. It'll help me with my conversations.
You memorize all that?
No, no.
Not yet.
You're slipping. Um, no, we'll send it, we ha- we have it all prepared, obviously, uh, for our own budget work and, you know, for the council like, uh, so yeah, we'll, we'll get it.
It, in terms of, of where the state is, um, you're, you're right to be thinking about what the. Funds are in pilot, um, so that's something to watch. I, I'm actually somewhat relieved that it is not as awful as we thought it was going to be for FY twenty-two.
Yeah.
Um, and sadly, in some ways, the longer some of this goes on. It creates different revenue op- options, so for example, as long as we're in a state of emergency. We get an increase in what the percentage of Medicaid funds are that the state receives. That amounts to, oh, yeah, it's been a while since I've thought about it, but I think it's on the order of. Six to eight million dollars per quarter and, you know, so it turns into some real, there's just some weirdness like that. And obviously, as Ann mentioned, we're, we're hoping for federal relief, um. I, I, I personally have been very disappointed that we have not focused that more on. The services that both state and government, uh, the state and local government provide. And instead it has um, gone outdoor to people who are desperately in need. But um, you know, you guys are our first line of, of service and, and, in defense. And we need to be thinking about you. You, we'll, we'll do the next, we, or we are monthly getting revenue updates and, and. So that's all on the joint fiscal site, if you wanna kind of follow it there, but we'll see the next formal. Uh, forecast in January. When we'll build the budget from there and hopefully we'll know something from the feds, but. I, I've said that every month, that hopefully we'll know something from the feds and it hasn't happened yet, it's really disappointing.
So I have some further comments about the railroad, but I um, interrupted Connor earlier, so Connor, um, do you wanna, still have a, you still have a comment?
Oh, sure, I just had a quick process question and uh, on the legislative subcommittee. We suspected, but we didn't know for sure on a charter change, um, the non-US citizen voting in particular. Uh, we suspect we would need to put that to another vote again. Um, but we didn't know for sure and probably should have asked John Odom, we.
I don't thi- I could be wrong, but I don't think you need to phone on it again.
Yeah.
Um, I think you just need to say that you want us to work on it again.
Well, I think, yeah, it needs to be resubmitted, everything died. It needs to be resubmitted.
But that's something, you, you, you just need to say, will you please do it and we'll put in a bill request.
And there's emails out there asking that right now.
Right.
If it had been several years since the city vote, it might be wise just in terms of. Making the argument to the legislature that it was still pertinent, but I think it's fresh enough that we're okay. I feel comfortable resubmitting.
That's great to hear, thanks so much.
So. Sort of to that point about the non-citizen voting, um, and some of the other items that we have discussed tonight. How focused on covid-related uh, bills do you think the legislature is going to be, be this year in terms of like? Is anything else going to pass or will it be all covid all the time?
Good question.
We actually passed things last year, we were limited. At least in the senate, to, at first, to doing covid, but this year. We're getting better at covid, I mean, I, I think we know what needs to be done, uh. I can say this is the first time I haven't been proud to represent Washington County when. We are the highest covid hotspot in the state and we need to get that under control because until that's under control. Um, all the money that may be available is going to be being held in case we need to open surge or, um. You know, do more massive testing, but I think. I know both bodies are still trying to figure out how we might be able to meet in person, I'm sure you found out. There are limits to Zoom meetings, um, to the, the level of discussion. And there's definitely a level to not meeting at the water cooler in the hall. Um, to finding out what's going on on the other side of the building, so. Um. You know, it's probably at this point, as soon as we get a vaccine and get it out there. Um, we'd all like to be back in person and back doing other. Things, other bills, there's gonna be some cleanup. But I think this year we figured out how to do Zoom and so it will be easier to do other things. Um, within that limitation, so I, I think, I think things will get done, probably not as much as other years. But probably more than last year.
Yeah, I, I would agree, I think it's gonna be, it's, it's not gonna be just covid, there'll be other opportunities to pass legislation.
Okay, that's encouraging and just to get back to um, Mary's question about the railroad. Uh, I uh, have asked repeatedly for the debris that's next to my house. Uh, to be removed and not received replies, um, I know Bill has also um, inquired about that and. Uh, I continue to feel like they're not communicating sufficiently in terms of. Uh, warning for uh, spraying pesticides and I am curious as to um, where things landed. I know we had had some conversation previously about having some uh, exclusion zones or some uh, areas. That would be exempted from pesticide spraying and I, I, I'm not sure that I know where that landed, um.
Is it pesticides or herbicides?
Well, so I, I think in this situation, um, an herbicide, like the pesticide is the umbrella term, um, and so.
Okay.
I know it's, seems like pesticide would just be for animals, but it's not.
Okay. Yeah, and I think Mary put in a bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I'm willing to do that on the senate side this time around and. Um, have you guys been talking to the railroad or to V Trans, AOT? About the debris and other stuff?
Well, so to be fair, I think the people I, I was emailing, uh, were in uh, V Trans.
Okay.
Well, and, and we haven't had much contact with either of them in the last year, year and a half, you know, we've all had other stuff going on. And then we had this railroad issue that we kind of flipped out. Rail, let you, Mary's being, but uh, so most of our communication with V Trans and the rail has been about that specific project. Um, so these other issues, I think, from, at least from my perspective, have not had a lot of attention recently.
Well.
Bill, there's still live balls.
I agree that, I was disappointed in the way the whole thing worked out even from before that we had the last, the meeting, whenever that was over a year ago. So I'll reach out and we can have, make sure we have a meeting where we can list our grievances.
That would be great.
And Andrew, would you make sure that, and Bill, would you make sure that I'm included on that? I'd had very specific conversations with the secretary of A, of V Trans about this and was assured that. What happened would not happen, I mean, the same experience that you related, Bill, and um. I have some thoughts about how. The level of control that we can exercise, given that the state owns. The property and does not have to enter into a lease with the railroad unless it chooses to. And I think the lease is probably coming up. Just to be really, to be militant about it.
For whatever it's worth, they had piled quite a bit of uh, organic debris, trees that they cut down and so on. Uh, on city property and uh. They, they did eventually remove that, so we know they can do it.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, any, any other thoughts, comments, questions? Uh, Lauren, go ahead.
Um, I just mostly wanted to, to thank you, this has been really helpful and I think just. Um, continuing ongoing communication, I mean, obviously in these unprecedented times trying to. Understand as you all are dealing with budget deficits and we're trying to figure out, you know, what we, what we can cut for this year. You know, if we have better information about where gaps either the state might be able to fill or if. You know, if we do get federal funds, what things might be able to, might be better to kind of put on hold because they're the kinds of projects we could. Um, put stimulus dollars towards, you know. Better pause some infrastructure because that's easier to get dollars to or something, that kind of advice. Um, would be, would be great to just understand what you're hearing and seeing about, you know, what, I know it's kind of crystal ball right now, so it's hard to say. Uh, but just appreciate, you know, the staying in touch as much as possible so we can all do our best, you know, knowing we're. Have these, the budget shortfalls and also, you know, greater needs from our community that we wanna be addressing as well as we can, of course. So that's it. Thanks.
Uh, Dan, go ahead.
I I wanna echo the gratitude that the other city councilors have expressed for the four of you coming tonight and taking the time to talk with us through some of these issues. And I, you know, I'll echo Bill's take on on this, which, you know, is that we're having to deal with more demand for social services that we haven't traditionally provided in a time where we're facing these budget shortfalls, which is probably just a micro version of what you're dealing with on a state level. Um, but it obviously is causing us this type of distress um and need for additional resources. So to the extent that money comes from the federal government and pass, can be passed through to municipalities for these projects, we certainly, uh, we will spend it well and wisely um in providing some of these essential services. Um, moving forward, you know, if there's any way that any of you would prefer to have us um keep in touch as things, I know things can move quickly. Um, we're certainly all ears for that. Uh, Connor, Lauren and myself are the legislative committee. And really, we're we're policy, we we were formulators, but we can certainly extend to any type of uh communicators and uh people to go in between when when things start to happen, if we can help uh in any way. So I wanted to offer that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, um, not to open up a whole conversation, but one thing we didn't mention this evening was the other pull on our financial resources is are the schools in the city and and around the state who are like local communities are, taking on a lot of a bigger burden than ever before at a time when the resources are not there to meet the demands that are being placed on them. So it's just another thing we all need to keep in mind is schools are looking for more support as well. Educators and and uh staff at the schools. And so we, it's just, that's another pull on the financial resources that we have to keep in mind as we move forward.
I, you know, I think this is is helpful to sit, you know, in a formal meeting. But it would, I think, be more helpful if at some point, maybe the legislative committee or the, you know, committee with Bill, if we could have more informal meetings just to keep us updated. Um, because I didn't know what the issue with the railroad was. Um, and so I don't know, if I don't know what it is, I don't know how to, you know, if I can fix it. But in the old days, when I was mayor, um, as much as I hate early morning meetings, I was dragged up to the um, the state house at seven thirty every Tuesday morning. And we sat there and this was when we were birthing pilot. Um, we were there every Tuesday and we buttonholed our legislative delegation and talked to them about the reality of the state not paying anything to be here. Um, and it, you know, but to to find a way to to talk to us. Um, there's six of us. Those of us in the senate have a much bigger territory, but it's helpful to know what's going on. I think the cities have always, they're at the bottom line. When the state doesn't come up with the resources to deal with mental health issues, homeless issues, the bottom line is they're on the city streets and the city has to deal with them. Or, you know, let them freeze and sit there. Fortunately, we don't do that. So I think staying in touch is really uh important that we uh we continue to know what's going on. And if you come to the state house at seven thirty, I won't meet with you. Noon, noon is good.
It's good to know. Thank you.
Oh, Mayor, it's turned into a, Senator Cummings has turned into, you know, a nine hundred and nineteen thousand dollar coffee bit. So you did your job.
We try.
Well done.
Yeah, I'll I'll echo what Senator Cummings said that it, and what Dan was saying, that we could have communications more regular, whether they be email or or quick phone calls on a more regular basis, even though these with the whole council are good too. But I know we'll be in a lot of Zoom meetings. Your meetings are probably long as it is. So we can't always do that. So I think more regular communications would be good.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other further comments or questions? Anyone?
Uh, yes, I wanted to uh quickly mention something. I ride uh my bike regularly on our uh beautiful new bicycle path. And I noticed, like, it's just going back to the railroad conversation, that uh the uh place, uh, like multiple spots where uh uh, the the this new perfect pavement has been uh damaged to the point where you can actually can feel it when you ride on top of it. Uh, I realize that it's sad, it makes no sense to repave it, but uh it's definitely something that has been affected by the uh new tracks being laid in and all this heavy machinery riding on the top of the bicycle path.
Okay.
I would add to the word.
You know that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right, well, thank you again um for taking the time and we will be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all with this new session. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And where's the lead button on this?
Lee.
Quickly for the council, on this topic, legislators don't necessarily need to stay on, but do you feel the need to come back and revisit your list or is it good after that conversation? Just trying to decide whether to put it on another agenda.
No. Is it a question for the council?
Yeah, I just, our plan was to, after this conversation, to put the the legislative agenda back on and finalize it. But, you know, my impression at least was that we don't need to do that based on this conversation.
I agree. I don't think anything's changed. Okay. Thank you. Agreed with enough information.
Yep.
Thanks.
One, did we want to put non-citizen voting on it just so that they have the clear message? We could just put that. I don't think we need to have it on an agenda again.
I will do that. Yeah, we just have something about the charter changes. We can be specific.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. You're perfect.
Mayor, can you take a comment on the legislative agenda?
Uh, sure.
Uh, I believe now is an opportune time to have the legislature being that uh for the next year, uh legislative process is probably gonna happen remotely. Um, it's an opportune time to address the parking issue, to do some planning around what satellite parking by legislators and lobbyists might uh create a positive impact on on downtown parking congestion. Uh, the economics of the hotel and the garage are very iffy. And so uh, we may need to address, we still do need to address parking. And now would be an opportune time because it's not uh such a burning issue while people are working remotely. Um, so I think that that's one that getting the legislature engaged in discussing whether or not satellite parking at the junction or out at the uh Route Two uh rotary places like that and using potentially light rail or passenger rail to get into the village is is worthy of discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Stephen. And uh maybe that could be a part of our our follow-up conversations. Um, okay, any other further comments on this? Okay, um, all right, so on to our COVID nineteen update. Uh, so I assume for this, we are turning things over to Cameron. Oh, Donna, yes. Go ahead, Donna.
You reversed you um number eight.
Oh, that's right.
Alternative transportation.
That's right. Let, we need to do that. So my apologies. Uh, so um revisiting the alternative transportation uh fund allocation to, um, well, from the from the parking fund. Um, so for this, I'm gonna turn things over to Bill.
Uh, this, hopefully this is reasonably quickly. A few years ago, um, as we were entering into our um alternate transportation plans, my pillar, uh, we had a good name for it. Um, slipping my my mind. So, yeah, but anyway, we had a the alternate transportation plan with the bike paths and all things through the city. And the then city council wanted to make sure that there was a dedicated funding stream to help do some of these projects, which was a fine idea. And at that point, we had just uh, I think, raised parking rates. And the anticipation was we were gonna have a fairly significant surplus in the parking fund. And so the council set, uh, and and as I recall, this was done fairly quickly. It was an idea that was thought of at a meeting and approved at the same meeting. There wasn't a lot of financial vetting to it. And um, the council approved a five percent allocation from the parking fund to go to alternate transportation with the logic being that, you know, cars coming into the downtown, creating the congestion. Um, you know, their fees are paying for parking are to help create alternate solutions and it was fine. Uh, and at the time, that was around forty two thousand dollars. And then I think the next year was determined that rather than make it be a percent, it would just become a hard number, become forty two thousand dollars. Um, and and that's where we've kept it over the years and it has funded a lot of great things. But one of the pieces that got, I think, missing in that conversation was what happens when the parking fund is no longer generating sufficient revenues even to cover its its core costs. And so what we saw this past year, you know, the fiscal year we're in and last summer when we had to shut parking down completely is, you know, huge, as we mentioned, huge rifle revenue losses. And next thing you know, we're getting, uh, and again, nobody did anything wrong here, but requests for use of this money. Like, there's no, there's no money here. It's like, we've, we've furloughed our employees. We're not, you know, there's no forty two thousand. We're in like negative six hundred thousand. And so uh, so we felt it was important, I think, because we were kind of made it just to staff, you know, determination that there was no money uh that the council weigh in on this. And I, so our recommendation, obviously, obviously, our recommendation is that that if you want to continue this policy of using parking funds for this purpose, it should be conditioned that there is sufficient revenue in the parking fund above expenses. And that it should probably be a percentage of that, I don't want to call it profit, but that surplus that that fund balance that can be used um toward these purposes, rather than, you know, once you set a number, this doesn't. I mean, you always have, you, we always have the option of putting in our capital plan, maybe not this year. Putting in our capital plan, an allocation for alternate transportation, and it just would be funded out of the general fund. So it's not like we're necessarily saying there would not be alternate transportation funds. But if it's gonna be tied to parking and particularly right now, um, you know, our professional uh suggestions, there's no way to sustain it. There's no way to fund it right now. So that's our our suggestion is that we we could go back to what I believe was the original intent of the council, which was we have extra money, let's use it, not to pay it out of this fund regardless of whether the fund is.
So that logic makes sense to me. I mean, I remember that being passed and we did not consider that prospect that the parking fund would not have generated a surplus. Any other thoughts, questions, comments, concerns? Uh, Donna, go ahead.
Um, I too was there when, actually Jessica Edgarly Wash, Welch, Welch? Uh, never say her last name that much, made the motion. And it was all done pretty quickly and with good intention. She was afraid that it might, five percent might be less than forty two and she wanted to stabilize it, was, I remember from the discussion. And I like the idea of five percent. It's reasonable for both groups, if it goes up, if it goes down. I would like the cap, though, to be increased up to forty five thousand. That would be another flashing beacon for a crosswalk. And it would be an even number and it's been at forty two for a long time and hopefully it'll get back up there. So that's, I I think it's a great idea and that's what I would endorse, the five percent at a cap with forty five thousand.
Seems fair to me. Uh, Jack, go ahead.
If that's a motion, I second it.
Was that, was that a motion, Donna?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so we have a a motion and a second further discussion on this.
If it's possible to make public comment.
Oh, yes, yes. Um, please, uh, go go right ahead.
Uh, great, so um, turn camera on so you guys know I'm not a faceless drone. Uh, my name's Dayton Kreitz and I am uh a recent chair of the Complete Streets Committee. Um, and I'm joined here by Konstantinos with the M-Tech Committee. Uh, basically, I I'm certainly just here to say, I think it sounds very prudent to say when we don't have enough money in the parking fund, five percent of zero is zero and that's, that makes perfect sense to me. I would like to either push back or explore the idea of the cap. Um, certainly times are tough now, but we're gonna get through COVID. And if, I think if anyone has seen um the increase in people being outside and um putting masks on and supporting Onion River Outdoors, I think the desire for outdoor recreation, including air transportation, walking, biking places is only gonna increase in coming years. Um, so I'd like to suggest five percent tied to that revenue, but why have a cap? And would suggest removing a cap.
Um, would uh anyone else like to comment? I I see uh Konstantinos and Elizabeth, you turned your cameras on. Konstantinos, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd also like to advocate for not having a cap uh on it as well. I mean, we might be going into austerity now, but hopefully that won't last forever and hopefully we don't want to be hamstrung in the future when the good times do return. Um, so M-Tech is committed to reviewing the city transportation infrastructure and making these recommendations to the council uh on how we can make it safer and easier for all users to get around. And the ATF is what gives us that capability to implement those solutions. So uh, M-Tech has discussed uh different ways we could provide that input. And uh, city manager did mention the CIP is one way, but uh the CIP is for mostly big items. It doesn't put in those smaller discretionary items that we have. So for example, we have a budget item for the Complete Streets Committee where they do their education and programming. So it's like they give out lights to pedestrians and cyclists in the wintertime or do various educational programming. Uh, the fund is also funded different planning efforts. So the Derry Main Street Scoping Study, the Downtown Master Plan, uh, there was money that was contributed from the ATF for those planning functions. And like Donna mentioned, uh, rapid flashing beacons are another thing that are paid for uh out of this discretionary fund. And these things might not actually get um be material enough to be in the CIP. So we might be losing out on some of that um without this this fund. So um, you know, I think by not capping the ATF, you do provide a committee that's actually charged with advising you on on transportation infrastructure and opportunity to actually implement those changes. And just to let you know, also, there are some controls over the ATF. Uh, there is an application process. We do have a rubric where we do review any applications for those funds that come in from the public. So it's not just, you know, the the funds can go anywhere. Well, we know that we do have a process to um put them in in places that are actually gonna have some sort of impact. And we do review them and have uh votes and discussion on it at the committee. So uh, with that, I'd just like to make sure that you guys know that this this fund is not, uh, it it's very useful for us. And we do carry forward the funds every year as well. So you did mention that there is surpluses occasionally and uh some of those on purpose because we do see bigger ticket projects coming forward and we want to carry forward some of those funds that we save to pay for something bigger. So for example, traffic calming is something that we've been talking a lot about. And some of those uh projects might be, might be rather large if we're talking about re resurfacing a street with speed bumps or whatever treatment is gonna help um that specific, whatever problem it is. So um, having those funds that we can carry forward and in lean years, for example, a year like this year where five percent is zero, that's perfectly fine, but if five percent ends up being fifty thousand, um, you know, we we will find good uses for it. And the public is always uh encouraged to put in applications for um for anything that they feel would would assist them.
So I I think that's probably fine because it's it's the percentage of what what the fund, you know, is has cleared. So I I think that logic makes sense. Um, and I I would, I just want to say to both gentlemen, um, that the funds have been used really well. I think you have both have managed the processes really well and it does a lot of great things. So I don't think there's any question from us about how they're being used. It's just, there's, there's no money there to use. Um, and and to Konstantinos' point about the capital fund, I I think he's correct that no individual project might rise to the level of a capital thing. But we do have a couple of categories normally, and again, I'm saying normally because I think this year all bets are off. But normally in our capital plan, we have, for example, we carry ten thousand each year for just downtown projects that really my pillar alive uses. And those, they can be very one or two thousand dollar projects. We just carry that money. The same thing with parks and cemetery, we just carry a set number. So there's no reason other than limitations on the dollars that at some point in the future, the city council could have put in an annual forty two thousand or twenty five thousand appropriation for alternate transportation without it being limited to specific projects. It would just be, these are capital type projects. So I'd go to this fund. So it, it's not completely prohibitive. I'm not saying advising we do it and certainly I can almost guarantee it won't be in our budget proposal this year. But it, it's not out of the question as you think about other places to go. That is, that's one option.
Uh, go ahead, Donna. And then Elizabeth, did you want to speak? If not, that's okay.
You can let Elizabeth go first. She hasn't talked yet. I'll go after you, Elizabeth. Go ahead.
Oh, but we can't hear you now, even though you're unmuted. So, yeah, sorry.
He's, she's probably going to go call you. So I'll talk while she's calling.
Okay. All right.
I see about the cap is that there are other projects that involve things dealing with pedestrians, cyclist, non-vehicle related that are in our CIP that are very separate from the funds that this committee gets. I feel this committee is really blessed to have any funds to deal with. This is like a discretionary pot that I don't know if any other committee has a pot to deal with. And so, but yet I do feel like it needs to be contained. And that within the CIP, yes, there are projects that the MTIC can support and bring to the CIP group and DPW that will go directly in there totally separate from the ATF, ATF funds. So I think there's a different issue here from the big, big projects and the things that are more included in the FT ATF funds. That's why I feel more comfortable with a cap.
Okay, thank you. Other thoughts? Uh, Lauren, go ahead.
I was just curious and Bill might have the answer. What, so excluding this crazy year, like what's, what's a normal variation of, you know, is five percent? So that particular year that this was established, forty two thousand was the five percent? If I'm hearing you right, I'm just curious what the fluctuation or how stable that normally is and what five percent usually is.
So one of the interesting things about parking revenue, unlike other revenue is a typically, you know, you don't raise rates. You know, parking, I mean, it's changing a little bit now that we're going to Park Mobile and some of these other things. But, you know, when you think about parking, we sort of think about it in coin increments. So you don't really raise your rates a two percent one year because of cost of living and three percent another year. It's every, you know, you raise them a quarter like every 10 years. You know, it, it goes from a dollar twenty five to a dollar fifteen hour, a dollar fifteen dollars. And, um, and it sort of depends on what's going on right now. So the parking fund tends to get like a big jump in revenue. And for a couple of years, it makes, it has a fairly large surplus, at least in theory. Because the costs are just going up and then over time, the revenue kind of stays, do saw on the same camera, right? Revenue kind of stays about the same, assuming the demand is the same, but the costs, you know, are rising. So if we're really excellent money managers, right, we take all that surplus to just hold it. Because what's going to happen is eventually the costs are going to go past it. And you need that money to kind of cover it until you do the next big rate increase. So what, what happened was we'd just done a rate increase and we were projecting, you know, a fairly large, the, the big gap. And the council was like, whoa, let's take, and, and don't blame them. They were trying to figure out a way to do something good. This isn't a fault, but it's like, let's take that money and use it. Well, number one, we definitely, we actually, the reality is we didn't get as much of a gap as we thought. And secondly, now, you know, the last couple of years, we've been sort of breaking even or barely breaking even. And now, of course, now the bottom's falling out. And one of the things that we're looking to do as we rebuild is maybe take a look at things that were in the parking fund and should they be, you know, you know, don't waste a good crisis, right? Here's a chance to maybe reallocate our funding and look at how we're, we're using our, our dollars wisely. So as we rebuild the parking fund, i- ideally, we could build something like this into it as a regular cost. But, um, you know, so I, I thought it was a convoluted way of saying it's hard to predict what a surplus might be in a given year because, um, the revenues are really, you know, flat, really. Once, once you raise a rate, you're kind of at that revenue number for the next bunch of years until you change rates.
We're going to go Jackson, Lauren.
Hearing, uh, hearing Bill's description of how this works, I think it, uh, it makes sense to me to retain the cap as a way of, uh, giving us the opportunity to not necessarily say no to anything over the cap, but at least to trigger a conversation when, uh, if we get to the point where we have the surplus beyond that, uh, beyond that level. And so I, it makes me think that keeping that discretion within the city council is a good way to go.
Um, Lauren, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, I guess I'm just thinking, I mean, the same conversation is happening at the state level with the transportation fund. And, you know, how are we really prioritizing investments and alternative ways of getting around? And, you know, are some of those ultimately reducing, you know, the number of times you need to repave your roads and that kind of thing? So, I mean, to me, I would love to, obviously, you know, unfortunately not right at this moment, but like longer term, think about, you know, could we make that? Um, and maybe that's how Bill was describing it, more of a stable, predictable fund that could be, um, you know, part of our infrastructure instead of this, what sounds kind of unpredictable. And, um, we're seeing this year, not, not reliable year to year, but really try to get to a point where we're making a kind of consistent investment in this piece of our, um, of our transportation.
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me in terms of, um, you know, maybe not this year, but moving into the future. Just having part of our budget be like, no, let's, and, and have it not necessarily tied to, um, to parking. If this is something we value, then we should put money towards it. Uh, Donna, go ahead.
Well, maybe I'm not understanding people's interpretation of what Bill said, but this fund has gotten its forty two thousand dollars every year until this year.
Correct.
So the fund has fluctuated. The city has had less money because we made a flat rate. The, the, uh, alternative funds have been steady since the first time it was changed from five percent. So just the fund itself is nothing you can control, Lauren, because cars will do what cars do with weather and everything else. Uh, but the fund itself for this committee, the alternate funds have been steady since it was instituted.
Right. Because we set it at a set amount. To be clear, cars won't do anything. The people driving the cars will do what they're going to, they're going to do. But the, you know, I, I, you know, so just if I were setting this up from scratch, I mean, I, I believe it actually ought to be in our capital plan. I think this, if it's a value and a priority, it ought to be in our base budget. I, I, I recall what happened was we already had, we were working on building up the capital plan and we, we had a sort of plan for repaving streets and all those things, which, you know, we're still could be doing a better job at. So we were maxed out of money and the council was trying to find additional money to, to put to this. And it was like, well, let's use the parking. Nothing wrong with that. It's a policy decision. This may, I'm saying maybe this is the opportunity as we're recalibrating, coming out of this and putting our money back into different places. It might be the time to say this is just important to us and we're going to put a sum of money in our capital plan every year for this. And that's just what it's going to be. And, you know, does that mean that's forty five or fifty thousand that isn't a paved street? That's, you know, it's a priority decision for the elected officials to make. Instead of risking it on what the parking rate is and what the weather is and what the cars drivers do and those kinds of things.
Well, maybe, uh, if we move forward with it, at least moving it to interpretation of the, um, the, the surplus as opposed to the total amount of the fund tonight, cap or no cap, uh, maybe this is something you can revisit as a part of our, our budget discussion. Um, there was another hand. Well, so actually, first of all, um, Elizabeth, I don't know if you, if we can hear you now. I want to give you that opportunity. Um, and then, uh, Alex. No, no.
I'm not meant to speak. It's okay.
No, oh, no, we can hear you.
A miracle of miracles. I am having, Wes is going to be working on this computer next week to fix the sound at last. Um, hallelujah. Uh, so, you know, I, I'm really glad the direction this conversation is going in. Uh, you know, in the, as MTIC was working on the transportation plan. Uh, one of the important points was to, uh, really support my pillars, um, uh, you know, uh, transportation, uh, uh, work with, for biking, walking, et cetera. And so, uh, I, I just want to applaud the council for the, the direction you're taking this conversation. Um, of course, I'm, I'm on MTIC. I think that the work we do is very important. So I'm, I'm advocating for no cap. But, um, at this point, um, that may not be relevant. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, Alex, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I'm just curious if another variable has been factored in, into the parking conversation from a point of view of, uh, many organizations, uh, who are going to allow employees to perpetually stay, uh, at home. So some people who currently, who before COVID have, uh, worked out of one of the downtown offices may not be coming back. So as much as you want to, the demand may not, uh, return to where it was. So just for capacity planning sake, it's just another variable, uh, to look into and probably state might be one of the bigger organizations downtowns. So, uh, like if, if there is any way to predict what it's going to be like, uh, at least for the state employees. It will be like a big chunk of, uh, potentially predictable numbers.
That's something we've given a lot of thought to. And of course, we have no way of knowing what that's going to look like. But you're absolutely, I'm sure there's going to be some subset of organizations that choose to continue working remotely.
That's a good question. Okay. Uh, so there is a, uh, uh, yes, Konstantinos, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on, um, the piece of putting the money back into the CIP at some point, uh, and kind of putting the, having the ATF. Part of the CIP is that I think, uh, like I mentioned, having some discretionary control over it from the committees would still be important. This way we don't lose out on some of the programming that we've been doing in the past or, uh, if projects come up, for example, covered bike parking was something that we were talking about, you know, that's like a five or six thousand dollar expense, you know, right off the bat. And if someone, uh, puts an application for that and knows of a good location, um, and could be part of the downtown master plan, for example, uh, as part of the street, streetscapes. We'd like to still have that freedom to do projects like that on a, on a rolling basis as they come in where the CIP, my understanding is that it's kind of, it meets once a year, uh, and you go through all your projects and you prioritize them. And, uh, we would lose out on some of that control and we could lose out on some, some projects that we could do over the summer. Uh, rapid flashing beacons when we identify other places that might be problematic. It's just, um, I, I think it's important to keep that discretionary piece.
So I, I just respond to that and say it could be structured that way. Uh, you know, you're again, using the mobility alive, the downtown ten thousand, we don't scrub what's going into that. Sometimes they say that it's basically, here's an allocation that mobility alive can use for downtown projects as they come up and, and deal with that. And if there's a change to that, like, you know, a couple of years ago, a couple, I'm dating myself, several years ago, we had a big project and we knew, you know, we talked to them and said, hey, we're going to need that ten thousand for the next couple of years to go to this project. But it was for downtown. And they said, yeah, that's a great project. I think it was new sidewalks or something like that. So they were, they were okay, but it was done, you know, collaboratively, we did just take it from them. So, you know, if we were going to build a new bike path, let's say we needed matching money. Might go to your group and say, hey, can we take two years of this, you know, fifty grand to match the bike path? Great. Yeah, that meets our need. Um, but it's not, you know, it could be set up where you would, you know, it's an allocation or where you would make, you would have sort of control over it like you do now.
Thank you.
Uh, Donna, go ahead.
Yes, along those lines, Bill, Corey has been very good to come to the MTIC for matching funds. And the group has been very good being there for matching funds because the projects were related. So it definitely works very well.
Yeah, of course. You know, it's, it's been a great program.
Cool. That's encouraging. Uh, okay. So any further comments on this, uh, on the motion, uh, that's been seconded? It's, uh, just to, to recap, uh, as I understand it, it's to have the five percent come from the surplus of the parking fund, uh, with a cap and, uh, Donna, the cap was forty five thousand, is that right? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion on that particular piece of this? Okay. Um, all in favor, can you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. So the motion passes. Um, thank you. And thanks for, um, to all of you who came out to, to chat with us about this. I appreciate you, uh, taking the time and, uh, getting the input from, from your committee. It's really valuable. So. All right. Um.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Where are you going to the next topic? Uh, I think we may have skipped over the consent agenda.
Oh, we did skip the consent agenda. Oh, I'm all about skipping things tonight. Let's do that and then we'll take a break. Is that okay? Okay.
I'll move that we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I like that people are still using the two thing that makes me very happy. Um, so, all right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, it is now eight thirty. Uh, let's, what do you think? Two, five minutes, 10 minutes?
Uh, this one was slightly longer than some other ones we've gotten recently. There's obviously been a lot of movement and the uptick of cases in Washington County and Orange County. Um, I do want to say that the governor has been very clear in why he's putting out the guidance that he is. Really focusing on want versus need of things to stay open. Um, he did extend his state of emergency through December fifteenth. The new guidelines, um, at this point, I am sure most everyone is aware of them. But, um, starting November thirteenth, he has banned multi-household gatherings, whether inside or out, public spaces or private. They really discussed why twenty one percent of cases associated with an outbreak in Vermont right now are because of a private event or social gatherings. Starting on the thirteenth at 10:00 PM, they've also closed all bars and other social clubs. Restaurants can stay open, but they have to be closed to in-person service after 10:00 and have to switch to go services. There is now also a more stringent requirement for folks to keep logs of people who come in. And Vermonters who sign those logs are, um, stating they're going to comply with contract tracers. We're, oh, I'm sorry, returning college students are now required to quarantine for 14 days, even in state. Requiring, they're requiring telework for those who can, um, and discouraging in-person meetings. They're also pausing recreational sports leagues, which I'll, um, explain a bit later how that impacts our rec department. And they also stated they're going to be releasing more guidance on gatherings this Friday. So I will send a update to y'all at that time. The hospital, um, has some updates as well. Health Services has ordered hospitals to go back to tighter restrictions, which includes no visitors, very limited exceptions. Again, our travel map has been suspended and all travel into Vermont requires a 14-day quarantine or a seven-day quarantine and a negative test. The state has also said that they'll be using state resources and local, um, officials to help them conduct safety and compliance checks at folks where people, um, gather. So our modeling update is, I think, the biggest change from last, uh, time y'all met is there has been a pretty steep increase of cases. In the last 23 days, we've added a thousand cases in the state. Vermont currently. Vermont currently has the second highest reproduction rate of the virus in the country right now. Um, currently, we have 593 active cases this week, which is 400 more than we had four days ago. The state attributes this to the Halloween surge from folks gathering um and socializing over Halloween. So um, that's really, really worrying. The state did reach out to us and their and met with us this week to discuss um, emergent needs in Washington County and Orange County, and will be helping sort of craft better communications for for us to share with residents. To comply with those requirements, the city is closing City Hall. I will also say that Dr. Levine told us specifically that he would like to see all public buildings closed currently, just to emphasize how serious this is. Um, this is not a spurious decision that we made. Um, we really were asked to close by health officials. Um, we are also canceling um sort of by proxy all the in-person council meetings that we had set up before. However, we know that people have urgent business inside City Hall, and so folks can call the departments that they have questions for. And we can still accommodate appointments on a case-by-case basis as needed. Uh, most things can be accomplished on the phone or online at this point, but um, we know that that is a detriment to some. Um, also, to comply with new state requirements, the senior center is suspending in-person classes for right now. It's continuing its online classes and its foot clinics. Um, and the recreation department is suspending rec center rentals for um any sports leagues. They are continuing um childcare for right now. Um, there is a new uh, an interesting thing is the state is expanding its testing capacity. There's add, they added new testing locations in Burlington, Middlebury, Waterbury, Rutland, and Brattleboro. And they also are increasing their testing at the Berry Auditorium from nine to three. Um, uh, they've had quite a few at this point, but the ones that are upcoming are tomorrow, Friday, Monday, the 23rd, and Tuesday, the 24th, and you can call 211 for a appointment to get tested. Um, I also included in the memo our community meal information, and another way is still looking for donations for folks. Do you guys have any questions?
Go ahead, Jack.
Uh, thanks, Cameron. Um, I was just, I just thought of this from an article in the Washington Post uh this morning. Do you know if there's any progress on uh development of a COVID-19 contact tracing app for cell phones in Vermont? A number of, they are in existence for a number of states, um, but Vermont is not on the list at this point.
Um, I feel like they would have told us that because they were talking about their contact tracing. They are upping their contract tracing uh, number. They're going to be including some of the National Guard members from Vermont into their contract tracing ranks. But I will ask them if that's something that they're going to be considering as an app.
Thanks.
Uh, Lauren, go ahead. And then Dan.
I was just, just uh, in response to that, I had heard um Dr. Levine at a recent press conference um on this topic saying that they were watching what other states were doing and basically until they saw a proven example or model, they didn't wanna spend their limited resources on developing that. Um, so I think it was a little bit of latency and if other states kind of had something that we could mimic, uh, but he hadn't yet seen it as something that had proven so useful that they were spending their their time on.
Oh, Dan, go ahead.
Sure. I had a question about, you know, we're seeing this uptick in uh Washington County cases. Have they broke that down into communities where we're in the communities, they're seeing the uptick within Washington County?
Um, they said adults primarily and adults who are socializing with others. Um, there has been some back and forth with the state and gen- not just us, all the localities about what level of information we can get to make sure that we target our communications to the right folks. Um, and that's not, I think, just because we're such small communities, they're not going to identify specifics other than right now, it's primarily adults and adults who are socializing.
What about geographically? Are they finding, you know?
Oh, um.
Montpelier.
They've broken it down by region mostly. Um, but I I don't think I have any more specifics than that, really. Um, they do have a heat map on their website. Um, but it just says general numbers.
Thanks.
Right, any further questions? Um, just to um, further that a little bit, I I had at one point seen a breakdown of the Washington County numbers by city or by town and uh.
Yeah, it definitely exists. It just isn't, it's like one of those longer-term maps where it says like how many cases you've had and do have, but it doesn't tell you anything more than that, right?
Right.
I'm gonna tell you what community that is.
It almost seems like a historical map where they, and that may be sort of a secondary tier. And and the message may be it's Washington County, so it's us. It's whether it's an outbreak in the northeast section of Washington County or not, we should all be acting as if it's in our community.
Um, they, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, they also are trying very hard to not be very specific in what they like publicly discuss because they're really trying to discourage uh to, for lack of a better word, witch hunting uh, who has the virus. I think that's impacting smaller communities much harder than it is ours, but um, still a, still something that could be possible.
Yeah, fair enough. All right.
Mayor, uh, will you entertain a one-minute comment, 30-second comment on this issue?
Indeed, Stephen, go right ahead.
Okay, the impact on those requiring bathrooms is inordinate and it's no excuse for not having secured the inside doors to both the upstairs and downstairs hallway and allowing City Hall bathrooms to stay open, send a cleaner in once a day. Uh, it's, it's really unconscionable to ignore that opportunity to provide restrooms. You could even have used the, have the police buzz people in, but that it's not something to just kick down the road. Secondly, we should all not just turn a blind eye to the constitutional issue of banning assembly. Freedom of assembly is protected by the First Amendment of the Constitution. I understand we're in a pandemic, but we don't roll over like sheep without questioning uh freedom of assembly. You know, to to tell people they can't have dinner with their neighbors is absurd. So, uh, I just need to speak up on that topic. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good point. I hadn't thought about that. Um, any other um comments? Okay. All right, so we have an infrastructure update uh from, I assume from Donna.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'm here tonight uh for the annual infrastructure update. Um, joining me is Zach Blodgett and also Kurt Monica. And I apologize that we did not have Kurt's, um, our deputy director's name on the front of the PowerPoint. Um, complete oversight on our part. Um, so, um, before we start talking about what we accomplished this year, I just wanted to sort of reflect and acknowledge on the changes um that our department encountered. Um, COVID changed everything for us. And so typically, we would be sitting here, the three of us, and we were talking, we would be talking about how well we managed all the projects that were on our plate. And um, but COVID not only affected our ability to undertake projects, it affected how we did the work of our department, when we did the work, whether we did the work and um, and and we had to deal with ever-changing rules, short staff situations um, and more. So we're feeling a little bit awkward and a little bit guilty that we can't come to this meeting tonight and do what we normally do, which is proudly present that we succeeded at everything that was on our plate. But I um, I do, as the director, wanna say that that was out of our hands and that our staff um, rallied, did the work we could, and there were times when we just couldn't not even engage with contractors. So we didn't have the option of completing work. And um, so I am going to, for the most part, turn this over to um, Zach and Kurt. And um, you'll see that we've created this PowerPoint. Everything that's in red is um, our items that were identified as needing to be done this year. Um, they haven't been done. Um, the black um is what we were able to um engage in and and deal with. Um, and so I'll turn it over to Zach right now, and um, all three of us will just join in as appropriate throughout the whole rest of the conversation. Zach?
Thank you, Donna. Um, so we'll first go over the the strategic plan goals uh that were outlined this year. So uh, the first one was Clarendon Ave, uh, Phase Two Road Reconstruction. Uh, that is now.
Excuse me, Zach, uh, I'm sorry for the interruption, but are you, are you share screening your presentation? Cause I'm not seeing it.
I'm not, I don't have that capability. So if Cameron wants to run through the PowerPoint, um, she can, or we can just kind of talk along.
I just wanna, I just check what what you were doing with the PowerPoint.
Zach, I've given you the authority to share your screen. Now, it should work now.
Can you do that? Yeah, one second while we get that up. Cameron, can you give Kurt the authority to do that? He actually has it. I'm on my phone and he's on the laptop.
Okay, you should all have the ability to do that, yeah. Here we go.
And then just begin the slide. Just go to slideshow. Up top. To the right. Yeah. All right. So of the first strategic plan goal, uh, it was Clarendon Ave, Phase Two Road Reconstruction. Uh, we are wrapping that up this week. They're just finishing up their, the final topsoiling. We have got a lot of uh actually really good feedback from the residents. Um, very pleased and happy with the contractor and the project and just uh, um, just a lot of compliments uh on that project. Uh, the other, the second uh strategic goal that we had was Taylor Street, uh, the stormwater and the road reconstruction. That is mostly complete. The lights are still, uh, they still need to go up, but uh, for the most part, the the road is paved, the sidewalks are in. Uh, the uh, the drywells are in, the the stormwater treatment is in. Um, so we're, we're now really just waiting on the lighting component. Uh, Chestnut Hill was another uh goal that we had, um, that was completed uh this actually this past week. On Monday, they finished the paving uh up there. Um, and then in addition to Chestnut, we had a paving of streets, cracked ceiling and markings, which were also all completed. Uh, in red, you'll see the Grant Street sidewalk repairs. Uh, the project was not completed. It was deferred. Um, we have received a grant for that project and it will be completed. It will be planned to complete it in FY '22. Um, Route Road Bridge, we had, um, in the strategic plan, we had it said that we needed to come up with a funding strategy for Route Road. We have allocated money uh to keep this, uh, to get this bridge funded, um, but it will be largely dependent on receiving the grant fund um during this next uh grant term. And then lastly is the Moat, Moat property, which the construction manager lost. Um, we've been unable to complete last year due to the required environmental studies, and then the construction manager uh, lost their site contractor, and then they have been unable to find a replacement uh to date, so. Um, so in summary of the FY '21 projects that were um major, uh, the majority of these were outlined in the CIP program. Uh, we, for streets, we completed Clarendon Ave, Jordan Street, Redstone, Taylor Street. Um, Memorial Drive leveling was an addition that uh that we included this year. Uh, Bailey Ave Bridge Deck um, was also added. And then, as I just spoke, we finished up cracked ceiling and pavement markings. The sidewalks along Taylor Street were completed. The storm drain on Taylor Street was completed. As I've said before, we've completed the the Chestnut Hill Road Stormwater Project. Um, Scrivener Street was planned, but still, we haven't had um enough time to get staff up there to complete that. We will likely be up there uh first thing in the spring. Um, if the weather holds out, we still might find ourselves some time to get up there. But um, I'm not, I'm, I'm not holding my breath on that one, uh, cause we're getting a little bit late in the season. Um, and then for MRGP projects, we completed McKinley, Chestnut, Wheelock, and uh Main Street. Um, for water projects, we completed Redstone East uh in conjunction with the Clarendon Ave project. And then a project that was newly added to the list was the Murray and North College Extension. Um, in addition, we, for CSOs, we did install our six uh monitors and three rain gauges um, which are now operational.
Okay, I'll talk a little bit about the projects that uh we didn't get done. Um, so for street paving, Dewey Street, Cornell were planned around the Clarendon Ave projects in that same neighborhood. Um, that was a budgetary cut, so we weren't able to complete the paving on those two streets. Uh, and that's uh similar for Westwood Drive, another um deficit mitigation plan item. And also Coming Street, um, we're just getting in a way with that one. Uh, that is currently being converted to gravel with our uh own staff. So we're gonna, the pavement condition was so bad that we've decided to temporarily turn that street into gravel. Uh, next summer, we plan to do in-house utility work on that street and then follow that up with paving. Uh, for bridges, as Zach noted, we didn't get the grant for Route Road Bridge, so we're gonna continue to apply for that grant. For storm drains and culverts, Main Street and Town Hall have a a large culvert in that area that um has begun, beginning to fail. Uh, the bottom of the culvert um developed some holes and there's some sinkholes developing in the, in the lawn of the property that the culvert runs under. Um, we just don't have the funding for that right now. We're gonna apply for a grant for that project as well. Um, Felt Street was gonna be a contracted uh storm drain project. Um, that was a budgetary cut to the COVID impacts. Um, Zach noted Scrivener Street, uh, that's uh still planned to be done in-house, uh, potentially in the spring. And then for utility work, um, in front of the State House, there's a uh, a large it's really a constructed um drop in the sewer main. It's an area we're not able to clean, so it uh ends up backing up the system a little bit because of, um, you know, that's uh in continuity in the, in the grade of the pipe. So that's a a really big um combined sewer overflow project that we wanna do. We're hoping to do that next year. Water, uh, Cornell Drive was planned to be done in-house in the spring. We weren't able to do the work because of the furloughs to staff and restrictions on construction activities. Um, and then there's a couple other small CSO projects that we're planning to do now, so that we didn't, weren't able to get to because of late start. Uh, that's Bailey and Sunnyside and um one on Cornell.
All right, so here's a a summary of the um, the completed projects. And you'll see on the right that there is a a, an approximate goal slash target that we try to meet on an annual basis. Uh, so typically, we're, our goal is two miles of roads paved. Um, this year, we were able to get uh, a half a mile of resurfaced roads, plus uh, we were able to do some leveling projects, so we were right, right around a mile worth of uh, paving work this year. Um, for, for sidewalks, we're, we look for to get around 444 square yards of concrete and 1,350 square yards of asphalt, and we were only able to get um roughly well, of a, of a reconstructed sidewalk, we got 267 square yards and a new sidewalk added. Uh, we were able to do 104 square yards. Um, for new sidewalks, we, our goal is to eliminate gaps, which are identified in the uh Montpelier Motion Plan or gaps identified by the um, MTIC. or gaps identified by the MPIC Committee. In addition, for crack sealing, we got right around three and a half miles of road done, which was actually really that's a pretty good number for for amount of crack sealing that was completed. The the goal and the target depends, it varies with the severity of the road. For storm drains, we look to get around twelve hundred feet completed a year and this year we completed six hundred feet of it. For stormwater MRGP, we're actually doing pretty well in that category. We completed four projects and the the goal slash target, we're on track. That one is, it's a little bit harder to explain because there's a whole bunch of tiered goals over the next twenty years. The first five years, we have to eliminate all of the high severity problems, which we only have a few remaining. So we have a couple more years to do that. And then for CSOs, like I said before, we ended up installing the six monitors. Our our goal and target is to fully eliminate CSOs. And then for water projects, our steady state goal is fifteen hundred linear feet a year. We were able to, we were able to complete fifteen hundred feet, but that was, some of those projects were new lines like Murray and North College. That was an extension. It does bring in revenue, so it was, it is good, but it doesn't, it doesn't really fulfill the steady state target of replacing fifteen hundred feet of existing mains per year. I should also note, though, that in this table, we forgot to include the work that was done at the rail crossing along Berry Street. So there's an additional five hundred feet there, which should be counted towards the existing infrastructure. And with the sewer, again, we forgot to, we omitted the Berry Street rail crossing, so we completed about a thousand feet of sewer line along Berry Street and our our annual target is around fourteen hundred feet. All right, so next I'm going to talk about the upcoming, upcoming challenges that we're facing this year and in the next year. So the first one is maintaining appropriate funding for infrastructure categories. As you all know, because of COVID, we're having to make cuts on some of them are projects. So that impacts the amount of work that we can do, which translate in, which translates to not meeting our steady state targets. We deferred approximately five hundred thousand in equipment and projects in FY twenty. We also have reduced staffing levels with six positions that remain vacant in the department. It also should be noted that typically we hire a construction inspector for summer projects, which we did not have this year. In addition, the reduced staffing is limiting our capability or our ability to complete in-house construction projects. We are trying to diminish overtime as as best as we can. We have, we've had a change in leadership positions, not just within our department, but through a whole bunch of positions within the city, which is taking its required time to achieve a new normal and for us to restructure how we operate. As it was stated a little bit earlier in today's meeting, the Parking Fund is no longer supporting the Alternative Transportation Fund, but now we passed the resolution, resolution tonight, so it still will support it. And then the last, last one on this page is the increase in public demands resulting in more people from working home and noticing more issues.
All right, so we'll continue with some additional challenges we'll be facing. The water sewer master plans, they've hit five years this year and really need to be updated. A lot of things have changed with the big projects that we have currently ongoing at the wastewater plant. We have to maintain compliance with our long-term control plan, which is our plan to essentially eliminate combined sewer overflows. There's some regulatory requirements associated with that. Meeting net zero targets for fleet and equipment, obviously with the the reduced budget for equipment purchases, it's going to be difficult to upgrade our fleet to meet those goals. Also related to delayed equipment purchases is the more potential equipment breakdowns. Because we're not replacing equipment on our prescribed schedule, we're likely going to have to spend more money on repairs. Funding for survey in order to build shovel-ready projects. We talked a little bit with the legislators about potential stimulus money. You know, we have a couple of small projects that we could get ready pretty quickly, but you know, the one that comes to mind is East State Street as kind of our next really big reconstruction projects. And that's a fairly big undertaking just to do the survey work and and design. And and right now, we don't have the funding available for that. The the changes in the CIP fund related to paving funding also will affect the water sewer master plans. And that's because when we try to do projects, again, like East State Street, we try to you know, couple of the infrastructure, the utility work with the with the CIP money for paving. So just having that reduce CIP levels is going to make it more difficult to meet the master plan goals. And then the last one is COVID-related operational changes. Really having, you know, restrictions on, you know, how many people we have in the work zone and the safety equipment, wearing masks, things like that. Just a lot of planning going on, you know, one thing I'm looking at is is how we separate our staff at the treatment plants. Just a higher risk area for, you know, losing our staff in that particular area. Potentially all at the same time and not having anyone available to run the plant. So just a lot of, you know, planning ahead, getting, as we entering this next wave, we're really trying to stay ahead of potential issues associated with that. And then, you know, supporting new parklets to try to support the businesses downtown. New interrupt needs and, you know, assisting the school with in-street closures so that they can comply with their safety guidelines. And that is pretty much it for our presentation. Open up to questions.
All right, well, thank you. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Jack.
Hi, this is just a quick one. There aren't that many people that live on on Grout Road, but but how critical is the is the is the bridge issue? Are people in any danger of being stuck on the wrong side of the bridge?
Sure, again. So it's not, the bridge isn't immediate, is not an immediate risk of failure. The issue is getting heavy trucks over the bridge. So there's one, there's one property that needs a new well drilled and and the and the bridge currently can't support the load of that drill rig. So that's some of the urgency around it. There are also, you know, some restrictions on, you know, how a large fire truck or emergency vehicle could could access it. But the actual pedestrian cars or not pedestrian cars, but the personal vehicles are are fine to go over the bridge. Thanks for the foreseeable next few years.
Thank you, that'll be done.
Other questions? Go ahead, Donna, yeah, and then Lauren.
I I just can hear all your discouragement of what you haven't completed. But I wanted to tell you, I see what you have completed and what you've coped with. And I salute your your work and I know that you'll do the best you can under these very, very trying circumstances. And I thank all of you.
Thank you, Donna.
Lauren, go ahead, and then Dan.
Yeah, I mean, I also wanted to, you know, Donna's starting off with apologies, like we're in unprecedented times and we all recognize that and appreciate all that you have gotten done. So I thank you and, you know, it's been, it's been a hard time for everyone and, you know, the the list that you showed us of everything that you've gotten done is is impressive to me. So thanks for everyone's hard work. Also wanted to say, congrats on the standard offer agreement that we approved earlier, right? Yay, that was a good step forward, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. That's great to see. And my only question was for the staffing issue, is it, it's just been hard to hire people or what's or are we, have we stalled out on hiring because of our budget issues? Or could you just describe what what's?
So part of it is budget, has been budget issues. Each of the departments has been asked in a couple of different timelines to offer up the ability to move forward with a balanced budget. And so that's part of it. Zach, Kurt, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I mean, some of it was the fact that kind of it was just kind of bad luck on our part. We had a lot of vacancies when COVID hit and it just caused a lot of stress on. You know, we had a hiring freeze very early on and we had vacant positions open when that happened. And, you know, some of that is somewhat related to the inability to find good quality candidates. We do need to look at our our union contract and we were up for a, to revisit that and to update that. But we're having a little bit of a hard time bringing new employees in. So when we are making offers to people, they're sometimes backing out at the last minute because they decided that they want to stay with their current job or they have got a better offer. So we actually lost three individuals that were all but ready to come here and had already signed a commitment letter and then backed out at the last minute and then this happened. So that's just some of the difficulties we've had. We lost an engineer because he wanted to go have other life experiences, no fault to him. But it just kind of been, some of it's just was bad timing. And then the other part of it is just having a hard time being able to fill some of these positions.
Well, I just want to add my two cents here that I am so grateful for the work that you all do and want to recognize that you've done a lot with a little and we're, I I and I think that shows through this as well. I know there folks have things I want to say. Did I see it? I I know I saw a hint from Dan and then Connor, yeah, go ahead, yeah, and then Jay.
So when we, when you talk about the the goals for each year, the approximate goal and target for each of these categories, like resurfacing or leveling two miles of road, is that a function of of both staff and budget? Such that if you were fully staffed, would you have been able to have done more paving this year? Or was it because the the budget numbers were held back?
So in terms of paving, that was, is directly related to the budget being held back. That is something that we contract out, that service. So when we eliminate roads like Westwood, that was, you know, almost three quarters of a mile. So we ended up having to take things out to meet the shortfalls in the budget, which is why we weren't able to hit those targets.
Right, and and so if a budget shortfall is coming in the upcoming year, it just means again further delays in that and the only way to sort of get either caught up or back on track would be to expand the budget to allow for that missing pieces. And and let me ask that question then about catching up with some of these goals and plans, some of these larger goals and plans. You know, is this something where these are just lost years and we're going to have to reevaluate these plans in the near future? Or do you see a path forward for catching up with some of these larger goals?
So I guess street paving is probably the hardest one to to talk about because it relies really so much on hitting your minimum targets. I mean, generally, we have forty miles of road that we pave and we have a twenty-year lifecycle. So it's pretty easy to understand that you need to do two, two miles a year to be able to get your forty miles. So when you, when you start, when you are unable to do as much, we can only get really so creative with how you, you know, stretch the money. You know, Coming Street this year, we were going to convert to gravel in an effort to kind of improve the road. So I think that we will be able to catch up a little bit, but without really increasing the funding, I don't know how we can have a, I don't know if we'll ever be able to truly catch up, at least in in the like short term. It may be a little bit of a progression to dig us back out of it.
Sure, but even looking beyond the the paving question, as far as, for example, the master plan for the water and sewer that you mentioned, you know, is this something where you're going to be looking to reevaluate some of that in the next, in the next two years? Or do you see a path forward to catching up with some of these?
Yeah, so for the water and sewer master plans, we we had planned to essentially reevaluate those on a five-year cycle. It's just a lot of changes with the plants and everything, like I mentioned earlier. We don't know where those funds are exactly as far as financial impacts. There's some early indication that there's some delinquent, you know, water sewer bills. But we don't have a good handle at this point on what the financial impacts are. You know, the, in the short term, I don't think, you know, the loss of of the CIP for paving funds associated with large reconstruction projects, I think we could catch up from that and just do solely utility projects if the funding's there. But I think at this point, it's a little, little too early for us to to say exactly what that impact's going to be. But I, but I think there's still a chance we could, you know, stay on track with the city state.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Connor.
Yeah, no, I I think I just want to echo the thanks of everybody else. It's actually pretty exceptional when you see this report. We've deferred half a million dollars, you're down six staff. We've asked you to like reduce overtime. Sometimes I think like if we just push pause this whole last year, you know, we're doing okay. So to see the progress that's been made, I I think is pretty remarkable and just hope you're honest with us going forward about what you can and you can't do, I think. But, you know, this is great. And and the other thing, like, it's not insignificant, this parking change that we've gone through the last few days. And to see the emails of, you know, constituents who feel like they've been heard on what might be a minor change, but it is a very major thing for them. Really appreciate that, guys. I I think you've all had a really good way about you as you interact with people in the city there. But let us know the limitations and we'll probably have to reconcile the overtime and sort of staff shortage as we get into the the budget there, but thanks so much.
Yeah, I just want to add too, I mean, they have done a great job and, you know, when you add up everything, water sewer, all of it, DPW really is about fifty percent of all the money we spent. I mean, half of everything the city does comes from from them. And so, of course, what that means is when you have big financial problems, they they get the biggest hits. And part of some of their projects are the biggest dollars and, you know, I I we have, we actually have our budget congress tomorrow, but I suspect it'll be more of the same, at least for one more year. You know, someone, someone asked, we just, is this just a two lost years? In some regards, it's kind of the way it is. At least in terms of major projects, I think what we staff and after we get through this year needs to think about is as we come out of this, is there a way to, you know, bundle a bunch of projects, maybe do a five-year bond or something to play some catch up for for the last years and still try to stay within our annual funding, you know, front loads of projects. But, you know, we've got time to think about that. But, you know, none, none of us saw this coming and it's, you know, some of, even some of the water and sewer things they do is with their own people. And if they're short people and people can't work in close proximity and so hats off, DPW's has been fabulous and very responsive to people and tough time right now for them.
Yeah, I agree, so so grateful. I just have a couple of of follow-up. I just have a couple of of follow up questions for you. I I. See that Taylor Street is in the completed category. I know it's upon occasion over over the summer, you know, they would do work and then sort of fill it back in. But so it's so Taylor Street is is done now.
Yeah, with the exception of the lighting, the lighting posts still need to go up, so. The the bases are in, they're ready, where I think we're just waiting on the electrical contractor to to get in here and. There were some, there was a really long lead time in the actual fixture that they had a problem securing and. Again, it goes back to COVID COVID related issues, they couldn't, the supplier couldn't. They couldn't get the light that they needed that we had that was spec, so there was some. Some lengthy issues, but I I'd have to ask Cory about when they're gonna be here, but I I think it's fairly shortly.
That's good to know, and it's also good to know, just a little bit of the backstory about the Moat property. I mean, that's something that. Folks had been, you know, upon occasion asking me about and and, you know, wasn't sure what the status was or or why there were some delays there, but. But it's good to know and, you know, hopefully they're able to find the folks they need to get that done. You know, just coming to. Sort of what Dan was saying and and Bill were saying earlier, I mean, I. You know, just thinking about. The gap that this generates on into the future and it's so, I I mean, as with everything, it's just so hard to know how. It's going to play out. I mean, I I like this idea of. Having a bond to bundle a bunch of work together so that we can potentially catch up. But I I could also see. You know, I mean, at at one point, you know, while I was still on council, we were. We were quite far behind on fully funding our our infrastructure needs and those were. I mean, they were not good times for everyone, but, you know, relatively speaking, they were better times. And so I I could just also picture us making a commitment in the future to to catching up and. You know, acknowledging that like if. If we're going to stay on top of this so that our roads don't fall into such disrepair that that they're even more expensive to get. Get back up to to speed, that that's. An investment worth making. It's anyway, that's gonna be a conversation for a future council, I think. You know, especially as we come to understand like what. Are, I mean, yeah, what what's normal for our income and. Expenditures. Moving forward, because nothing, nothing is normal yet. But regardless, so grateful for all of the work that you all are doing and. You know, this continues to be hard conversations about about the budget stuff and that, you know, we. Are so grateful for all the the work that you've done, so.
Thank you.
Cool, any other further comments? Oh, yes, Jay, oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, Jay.
It's it's all right, and and I won't be redundant because I I too am thankful for all the work, but. I just think it's important also to acknowledge that that the report you guys. You all have just presented are are some of the more macro goals and and projects that you're looking at as a city. But I I I just think it's really important to acknowledge all the kind of the micro and the small issues that you deal with on a daily basis. Whether it's, you know, an emergency water main break, it's ten inches of snow in the first week in November. It's issues that come up for individual households. That, you know, you're still dealing with on a daily basis and doing your best to to communicate with with. You know, with with folks who live in the city and and stay on top of it to. To resolve issues as quickly as possible. I just I just think that that's important to acknowledge too that those things never stop. Regardless of where the bike is at and and how many feet you've paved or cracks you filled or or et cetera. So I just wanted to thank you all again for for staying on top of that and and your diligence with with those things. Thanks again.
Yeah, I agree.
Mayor, Steve, what ago when you get a minute, I'd like to comment on this topic.
I think now would be a good time. Go ahead, Stephen.
So, again, with with. Respected admiration for the effort and the teamwork that goes into this, I think this is a budget category which has been. Short shorted in prior years for many years running, even possibly decades. And I think we're foolish to not fund, find the money somewhere to get the survey. And have shovel ready projects when federal stimulus money starts to flow. We should be doing that survey now. On numerous projects, but to say that we're maintaining steady state, that's a slow slide backward. I mean, you've been hearing from me for years over these crosswalks, the paving that was done improperly last time. The puddling in the crosswalks which freezes and we haven't fixed that year after year after year. And and it's it's unconscionable, so when we have sloped sidewalks from Frostheave. On School Street where people are falling down just trying to walk down the sidewalk because the library melt. Runs across the sidewalk and freezes and and it's you can't walk on a sloped sidewalk. And it's just, there's there's too much that's getting neglected. You know, and it's not that people are staying home and noticing this. I've been noticing this and and listing it for way too long. And my point is that we need, this COVID has come and created a perfect storm to lower our bar of expectations. And that's not what we should be doing. We should be raising our bar of expectations and hiring the people to get the job done and get caught up on. Decade or two of of neglected maintenance, so. You you need to put more funding in, but it's it's a target, we spent a quarter million dollars on signs that do nothing that point to closed. Businesses when we could have actually, you know, fixed some sidewalk or or, you know. Replace the two lamp posts would have live electric wires hanging out on the School Street. Bridge or the Rose Lucia Bridge and right in front of. The the fire station. I mean, where the the snowplow hits and pries up the steel on the Rose Lucia Bridge. All those corners are bent up and curled and I've walked around and showed those, you know, to staff. And we don't have time to walk around with a sledgehammer and pound that back down. We don't have time to fix the most glaring, you know. Anyway, you got the point. Donna's definitely got my got the point. This now would be the time, we know federal stimulus money is coming, now would be the time to get ready for it instead of worrying about a five year bond. Let's get some projects teed up and find the right staffing and get the survey work done now. I'll I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Stephen. Anyone else?
Constantinos is raising his hand.
Great, Constantinos, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Donna and Zach and Kurt for their presentation, it was really informative and the rest of DPW staff for all the work that they've been doing this year. Especially given all these circumstances, the budget cuts, the burlows, everything else, I think DPW is really the heroes of the city, keeping everything moving and getting up. They're getting the roads clean at four AM this morning from the snow and all the other jobs that you're gonna be doing this winter season and. You know, the water main breaks are happening and I think it's great, all the work that DPW does, but I'd just like to echo what. The mayor and Zach had alluded to and what Stephen had just said about this deferred maintenance being an issue that, you know, if we do. Go through this austerity measures going forward and DPW does get cut, it might actually be more expensive. To cut now to and then fix later, so I would hope that during your budget deliberations going forward that. I'd hope that you try and fully fund DPW as much as possible, given the circumstances and. To me, and and again, I'm speaking as myself, not as a member of Entaker. You know, I think any dollar that goes to DPW is a dollar well spent towards the welfare of our community. And I hope that, you know, you take that to heart when you're putting your budget together.
Thank you. Create any other thoughts on this? Okay. Alright, so we are gonna move on. I had earlier in the in the meeting said that we would table the curtain. Part part discussion. But I I so and Paige was not able to join us. Obviously, Connor, do you have any further word on that?
I I I think I was texting with her right now. She she would be grateful, I think, for another couple of weeks to maybe discuss this and come back with some more concrete stuff.
Okay. Alright.
Still, I think.
Okay, well, let's put it early on the agenda. For next time. How does that sound? Unless there's.
You just have a lot next meeting. We're supposed to be presenting the budget. GMT is coming to talk about micro transit. We were gonna hear from Capital Fire Mutual Aid about their. Their dispatch of communications infrastructure. And then, I think those are the three big things. And Mike Mike was gonna do an update on the housing initiatives goal. Probably push that to the ninth. And do curtain park on the twelfth or do curtain park on the ninth. The ninth is all budget. We don't have anything else. So maybe the mayor and I can talk about scheduling.
Okay.
Which which meeting would be best?
We'll figure that out.
I do think just it is a reality check, though. And I'm saying this without having talked to our DPW folks or parks folks or anything. We could be reaching a point in time where moving the part, moving that structure. Won't be happening till spring. So, you know, there's there's that's just one of the consequences of if we if we if we were to move it, if we the desire was to move it. And we chose to do so, we depending on the weather and conditions and where it's going, that could be an issue.
You know, I I wondered whether or not that was already the case.
Depending what we do with it, I don't know that it is, but it could be soon. I say that without having talked to our folks that actually know what they're talking about, so. So really disregard what I just said.
Yeah. Donna, go ahead.
I'm glad you brought that up because that was one of my questions. All we need is a real snow melt freeze and you can't move it. So I'm glad you're thinking about that, but I also feel like we have an issue now that we're not really dealing with. And trying to word this well, I think of having two sons, they're now and they're fifty, so they lived through it, but. You have two very clear different. Demands for that shared use pass. And some of the people using it feel very much harassed and intimidated by people who are using that particular shelter. And I I want to balance both needs, so how do we do that? I mean, how is the the police or social worker, we now have in place someone to help us negotiate? Behavior so that people can both have their rights totally protected. But we both need to be respectful while we protect one another's rights, so I'm really looking for some. Action now to move in that direction, whether or not that particular structure stays in place. So I'd like to have, whether it's a conversation now or or asking the police and DPW. And all to talk among themselves, how to keep it clean and how to keep behavior friendly on on everybody's side. Does that make sense at all?
So I'll just weigh in with, I mean, we can, we will certainly be happy to have that conversation, you know, I think asking. City staff from any department to to keep behave, to keep a certain behavior, a certain location at a certain standard at all times. Is unrealistic, I don't think, I don't think. You know, we can't be there all the time. And, you know, so I think one one of the things. In the 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 look at where at an alternative location, if that's what you wanted to do, we tried to consider, how do we? Put this in a place that. Still meets the needs of the people that want to congregate there and and is all, but it is also still accessible to the public since it was put. You know, meant to be a public amenity and I mean, all all members of the public. And potentially have it relate to the bike path alone necessarily and. You know, I and again, I I think from our perspective, my perspective, I'll just speak solely for myself. You know, this particular location on that corner with fences on either side and then the bridge just creates a cornered in situation now. Not everyone has to agree with that, that's fine, but I do think, you know. Having it somewhere central in the community where people who are using it can still easily get to it is is important, but. I I think, Donna, you're right, it's creating a conflict between two public facilities that were intended for different uses that. Are are in conflict with one another.
Well, but it's back to the same conflict you were having with people. On the sidewalks on State Street when they were in front of stores but not in front of storeways, like how to share that space and. I feel like we've got so tied up into moving this structure that we're missing the more significant conversation. That I was hoping the social worker, the peer support counselor was going to help us and our neighbors. Learn how to talk to one another and share this space and I I'm not expecting the police or anyone else to be there every time, but somehow. To have us have some really active group conversations. So that we can work on this, whatever happens to this shelter. It's still an issue of shared public space.
So I'm feeling a little torn at this point. I know we we said we would. Push this off to another day. Though, you know, it's, I guess it's it is nine forty, I'm not sure that we would be able to wrap this up by ten exactly, but how do others? Feel about having a discussion about this presently? Dan, go ahead.
I I mean, I feel comfortable having a discussion now. I, you know, I reviewed the options and. You know, I think there's there's a couple of different conversations with within this and it's part of it is keeping those threads. Somewhat separate and I think Donna's point's a fair one, but I think I I think that her point. Is is a larger point and I think. You know, the worst of all worlds is a situation where you have a shared use that creates an antagonistic situation. Which from the feedback that I've gotten in the past few weeks from people feels like it's 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 moving in that direction. One of the things I was really impressed about in looking at different. Options about where to put this that preserved the essential uses and I think that I felt last time we discussed this, it was. Really about how we how do we preserve the essential use of the bike path? And this this use and this need that has sort of. Suesponte kind of arisen around this shelter where it is and one of the options. You know, would be to move the shelter to where in front of City Hall where the sort of Plexiglas Bus Shelter is. And one of the things that I really liked, I talked about, talked with Bill about this, is because it would be so close to a building. It would put in, it would it would enable a charging station potentially. To be connected to the shelter so that if anyone, you know, because I know that's that's one of those issues. Where people need a place to charge cell phones if they can't have access to inside of a building. And so if the shelter had that, in 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 some ways, that feels like it it resolves a number of these issues. One is it it stops making the use that's emerged for the shelter. And the use for the bike paths stop being antagonistic to each other. Secondly, it preserves that use of the shelter, but in a. In and in a similar downtown centralized location and and for the dogments that use. It allows for something that doesn't exist right now. And so, you know, that to me, finding a solution like that, I I mean, that's just sort of a gift. When you can make something like that work like that, because then I think you can also. Then address what Donna's talking about and some of those larger questions, because you you've backed each the back the two uses off. And then it becomes much easier to talk about, you know, what these uses look like, how people. And then it becomes much easier to talk about, um, you know, what these uses look like, how people um, how people relate to each other a- a- and some of these problems. Um, you know, such as, such as we've seen in the past and such as we've seen at the site. When when they're, when they're forced into sort of each other's faces, I think you encourage that antagonistic behavior. I mean, you, you get emails from panicked constituents who say, I'm really uncomfortable walking by this. Or uh, an email, hey, there's, there's naked people down the shelter that, you know, are causing some people to um, uh, you know, say, why, why aren't we solving this problem? Um, and not the bigger problem, but the small acute problem. Um, and so I think by backing this off, and so to me, we we could, we could hold this conversation off. Because to go back to the mayor's pending question, which is, you know, I I I think we could put this off. We could put this off for two weeks, three weeks. We could talk to to Paige. Um, you know, we could sort of m- mull this over a little bit. But this is, this seems like a fairly clear solution that ha- keeping it where it is right now is not a workable solution because I think it does a disservice to both uses. Um, and encourages the antagonism that we've seen over the summer. Um, and finding, and you know, because we have these other options, and I can understand a few weeks ago when we didn't have an option where there wasn't, where there was a an asserted use, but not necessarily an option on the table. Um, but I feel like now we have that and we have that option. And so I'm happy to go ahead and have a conversation. Hell, I'm happy to vote for it right now.
Uh, Jack, go ahead.
One of the concerns I have is that uh, I suspect that there are people who were watching the meeting earlier who heard the mayor say, yeah, let's table, let's push it off to another meeting. And I actually, while the meeting's been going on, talked to a couple of people who are interested. And they said, so is it not happening tonight? And I said, yes, looks like it's not happening tonight. Um, and I think we're depriving ourselves of the public input that we uh, were hoping to get. Um, I, whether the uh, whether the location in front of City Hall is is a good option or not, I think that's certainly something that uh i- is a good part of the conversation, although I don't think it's realistic to say that uh people who are uncomfortable walking past uh, this structure with people congregating on them, on it, on the uh, shared use path are gonna be any more comfortable walking past it when they're, when the site of congregation is right in front of City Hall. So I don't think it's an easy discussion.
So I I am certainly kicking myself for just like straight up canceling it earlier. Uh, I apologize, uh, probably should not have just jumped to that. Um, but I think you're right that we probably do need to make this decision with um, you know, if there, if there are people that want to weigh in, we need to hear from them. Um, and I, I also have faith that you know, there might be, there might be some warm days um, left or warm enough days left that it possibly could still be moved, even if we take it up um, later. But Lauren, go ahead.
But I guess I was just wondering if um, I I don't think I do, but are there, were there questions or like with a memo we got? Is there any additional information gathering that it would be good to let city staff know or anything? If we're gonna push it off two weeks so that we don't have the discussion and then realize, oh wait, I had this question and we didn't answer it in the meantime.
Uh, Connor, go ahead.
Yeah, I can see, uh, I thought maybe Confluence Park might be an option too, if it was set back far enough. And there was talk of having a a structure such as this, I I think at some point with the River Conservancy. Um, so that was the only question I had. I'll tell you, like, the constituents I've heard from um, this week have said, leave it there, you know. We wanna keep it on the bike path. It's uh, you know, the the whatever problems you have are gonna move with the structure. Uh, so just deal with that. And there's like a thinner spots on the bike path. That would create, you know, just as much problem with the social distancing and stuff. Um, in talking to Paige, and it was, you know, it was it was a brief conversation, but it was definitely meaningful to her. Um, given the work that Jed has done on sort of water quality in town to maybe have that on a place on the water where the grandkids could come by and uh, sort of pay tribute to the granddad there. So if there are options like that, I don't mean to get too sentimental, but that would definitely resonate with me.
So I, just for context, also, I um, I'm a little wary of putting it. I I've I've thought about putting on the uh, you know, the option of putting it at the Confluence Park space as well. But uh, it seems as though that may actually not resolve the issue um uh, too much because there is still that proximity and there's, there's still a corner there. Um, and uh, yeah, I I'm gonna let Jay go. Go ahead and then um, Stephen, go ahead.
Well, I'll just jump in on a couple of thoughts here. One is the um, the, I think the as far as Confluence Park, as I understand it, you know, there's, there's been a fair amount of design work already done. And a structure like this, there is, you know, thought of kind of an open space or performance space. But a structure like this doesn't necessarily fit in to to what the, you know, where the design is at at this point. And um, and yeah, I would be concerned that it would not alleviate um, uh, the issues that are, that are happening right now. Um, beyond that, ano- another thought um, would be to um, well, I I, yeah, I I I guess I don't wanna necessarily introduce another, another potential location because I think we've got to sort of decide if if we're, 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 we we're at a place where we can talk about moving it. Or I guess my, my primary concern is, as Dan said, that there, there is a real conflict happening of use conflict happening where it's at now. So are we in a place where we could say we, we can move it um, to resolve that conflict because where it is now isn't working? Um, or are we in a, because it doesn't seem like we're in a place now where we can figure out exactly where it needs to be um, in the long term. So those are just, just a couple of thoughts.
So, um, uh, yes, Cameron.
I just also wanted to acknowledge that um, while I do think that the homelessness task force did talk about this, um, y'all asked them to, and they did have a pretty long conversation about this. Um, and so I just wanted to sort of check in on if you're gonna be, I mean, later, how you would like to receive that information. Um, they did not have a cohesive statement. And they were also, um, they wanted me to share their thoughts. And also, they really were torn um, voting wise over whether or not to um, ask you for more time to consider your ask. So I just wanted to let you know that. I could also write it in a memo if that helps.
Hmm, that's interesting. That's, that's good to know. Um, uh, Stephen, you wanted to say something. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think the um, the inconvenience or the uh, anxiety that other bike path users feel is is miniscule in compared to the feeling of the people who use utilize that space as their only place where they can have a little shelter from the rain or from the wind. Who don't have shelter otherwise. That's located within uh, proximity to where they could go and crap on the riverbank or pee in the bushes. That will not exist in at City Hall. Uh, there, I I mean, it's clear that public drinking, you know, open container violations happen there. But that will not be uh, as easily uh, you know, City Hall. There, there's a privacy dimension of the human needs that are not being met, that are coming home to roost here. Uh, the the pu- the toilet facilities, the privacy, the respect, the dignity, the et cetera. And and it will not be solved by just taking it away from him, uh, taking it away from them. Morgan had a comments in the homelessness task force this morning. It, it's like, it's not in my backyard was one, the NIMBY acronym, you know. And he characterized it as no, not on planet Earth. We don't want these people near us, you know. And I think he, he, he's voicing something that you need to hear, that this is a this problem will not be solved by taking away the only safe structure they have to use right now. Uh, true, they wouldn't have to pee in the pocket park if there was a bathroom, if they could go and use the transit center bathrooms. But no, we just gave away that that option. So I, the task force ran out of time. Several key members, uh, Will Everly and Ken, uh, Russell needed to leave today. The discussion could have easily gone on another hour even. So, but ironically, uh, a vote to ask for more time failed uh because of politics. So I just think you're, you're, you're not gonna be able to solve this problem. You can take something away. Uh, you can move it somewhere else. You can move it somewhere better or worse for the population it serves. But you know that Casey and others have slept there. You won't be able to sleep next to the Walgreens driveway, you know. Uh, anyway. It's, it's a very complex issue, and if we do handle it right, we will make huge progress on not long neglected issues of responsibility and dignity and human rights that exist in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Paige, yes, welcome.
Hi, hi. Started to jump in late. I was told earlier that you were gonna table this until next week, so I was, yeah, then I got a note from John Odom.
Yeah, we, we were, and then we, you know, we were like, well, should we, should we table it? And then, and then, of course, that just became discussion. But um, uh, go ahead, Paige.
Well, I, I've talked with both you. I talked with Connor this afternoon. I appreciate your getting in touch with me. Um, and I, I honestly think that this is a way bigger problem than just the, the uh, Gerton Park. Um, that moving the shelter is not gonna solve the problem. And it does, as Stephen said, it takes away, right now, everything is closed to those people. City Hall is closed, the churches are closed, the transit center is closed, everything is closed that they could normally go to. And that's a place with shelter. Um, I granted, it's not convenient for the rest of us. But I think taking it away does a disservice to the community. The other thing is, it, that structure and the flowers and whatever, when they're kept up um, beautifies a particularly ugly spot on the bike path. So I think you really need to think for, I don't know where you're at right now. If you're gonna move it to City Hall, I'm gonna protest violently. I think that's really uh, unproductive, totally unproductive move. Maybe I misunderstood. I just got here. So um, anyway, I um, I talked with my son tonight, actually, for a while. And I, I had, as I mentioned, and I had a couple of suggestions, and I wouldn't do it now. I would do it after COVID is done and maybe people have places to go or after we have a discussion about what else we can possibly provide for people who don't want to live in houses. Um, but one of the places was the future Confluence Park. I think that might produce the same problem because it's not very far away. And it's also difficult to access, to clean and empty the trash, and I don't know that there's water available there. The other possibility is um, along old country club road. There's a little parking lot, there's a fishing spot. That's a long stretch of bike path without any shelter from the sun or the rain or whatever. It's a really nice area. It's far enough so that some of the local people might not go all the way. You know, some of the homeless might not go all the way out there. You could set up um, a little solar pump with water from the um, river to water flowers and beautify it and make it a really nice spot out there. And personally, because it's for Jed, or that was after the fact, I realized that, but it is now a memorial. I would love to see it on the river. I think that's important. I think that's what he was about. But I also believe that he would not be happy about just taking that little shelter away from the people who are using it.
So um, one other, thank you. Um, so one other piece of information that feels relevant is that um, from my communications with Another Way, they were planning on building um, a similar structure on their site. So whatever function um, the, that structure is serving uh, could potentially be um, replicated over there, which is not that far.
Right, but it's also right on the bike path, so that's why the problem is not gonna be eliminated unless you move it away a little bit.
Right, well, and so that's, uh, I guess I'm um, I'm saying that uh, that frees up the location of uh, the
Right, right. That's great. I'm really happy to hear that. Um, because I think something, something needs to be provided for people. And everything else is close to them right now because of COVID.
Yeah.
So that would be awesome.
Hmm, well, so I, it is ten o'clock. I actually don't think it would because we said we would table it, I don't think it would really necessarily be appropriate for us to vote on it tonight, unfortunately. Um, but uh, which is actually like, wh- what I was like hoping to avoid. But um, Morgan, you wanted to add something. Go ahead, Morgan.
Yes, um, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Uh, first off, I just wanna thank Stephen for his comments and uh, and uh, quoting me appropriately. And uh, from today, and I also wanna thank Paige for um, getting on and chiming in. And I appreciate your comments. Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I'm quite concerned about, you know, this this had been tabled and now the discussion has been backdoored. Which, you know, it's up to the council's discretion. I know, that's why I've been watching you on YouTube. I know how these things can happen. So I've alerted all kinds of people uh, about this. You know, I had let them know earlier that got tabled and I've since alerted them that, oh, guess what, they're discussing it now. And you know, it, it deserves me, you know, that uh, it's being raised, even though you might not vote on it, it's being raised and discussed in in quite length. After a lot of people have, you know, probably uh, turned you off and gone and done other things and not paying attention. And you know, it's like, if you're gonna have a discussion, forget about, you're gonna have a discussion on it. You know, have it when, you know, people are gonna pay attention like they were earlier because they thought it was on the agenda, you know. And uh, this is not all right, you know, and I was upset about this whole thing anyway before. A- and now, you know, I'll probably be up half tonight, you know, this is, this is not okay. And um, you know, have an honest discussion. Don't want people listening, you know, and trying to move this structure. You're kicking the people living homeless that are using it down the road. And you know, this is not NIMBY, not in my backyard. It's nope, not on planet Earth. And you know, it's, it's not all right. You know, people living homeless, they're just as important as anybody else. And you know, their needs are great, you know. And we should be discussing what the root, root situation is, you know, what the root problem, what the root need is. And that's, we need housing. You know, let's do something real meaningful. You know, quit kicking this down the road, you know, quit trying get rid of these people, cuz that's what you're doing, you know. And hey, you have the right to discuss it, but let's do it in the open, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Morgan. I I appreciate that. And I um, I think it is, I agree. Uh, and I, I think it's important that so, that we hear from everybody. And so uh, we're gonna wait at least until the next meeting to um, make any final decisions. But you know, that, yeah, that's, I, yeah, I appreciate that. Um, in any case, all right. Um, one hopes that like, we're like getting closer to making a decision, but um, but we'll see. All right. Any further final comments on this as we're, we're not gonna vote tonight? Any further final comments on this as we're, we're not gonna vote tonight? Okay, all right, thank you. Um, and, uh, so on to, uh, uh, council reports. Uh, Donna, are you, are you good to go?
Jackie, you have other business listed before council reports. Do you wanna ask anybody?
I, yeah, I mean, is there any other business? Usually, I mean, there's usually other business listed and there usually isn't any. Um, but, uh, yeah, it also lists the mayor's report first this week, which.
Well, there you go. Go for it, Anne.
Well, in that case, I, I actually don't have anything to add, so I would pass. Go ahead, Donna.
You always make me wanna be brief. Um, the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority had two new appointments by the City of Berry that will be joining that board. Its next meeting is December tenth and we'll be meeting to review the submittals to the RFP. Keep you posted. Uh, the other thing that I would like to talk at length at some point, maybe when we have a less late meeting, is Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission has become the designated service provider for the Winutsky Basin. And all the funding from the state, their clean water funding, instead of going to the state directly and do a grant, you'll go to this service provider. So they will allocate the funding, they'll oversee the projects. And so it's a big change in the, how things flow or dealing with clean water. And so there's a lot I'd like to share about that at some point. And third, I'd like to check with Jack to see if he got all the council members to give blood on the thirteenth. I did. That's all.
Let me answer it now. The answer is, no, there's, there are at least two members of the council who were, uh, for medical reasons are not able to, uh, to do it. I, I tried it with, uh, my office too and, uh, I got, uh, I, I got some response, but not everybody, but, uh, you know, I, I've been giving blood for, uh, well, almost fifty years. I'm gonna keep doing it. And I think the rest of us who do, uh, will continue to do it when we can.
I'm glad you nudged us all.
Thanks, uh, Connor.
No, I think I've got, uh, just a, a, a very happy Thanksgiving to everybody next week. And we saw a meme today, which I thought was kinda smart. It's, uh, a, a Zoom Thanksgiving with your family is preferable to an ICU Christmas there. So just hope everybody is really smart, you know? Um, good news on the vaccine, right? So let's all just hang in there. Thanks so much.
Thanks, um, Jay.
Yeah, Paul, uh, echo Connor's, uh, thought around making sure we're safe, making smart choices, um, Thanksgiving. Um, make sure everybody, uh, if, if you're down, uh, near Shaw's, uh, the new downtown Montpelier sign went in today, if you've seen it. Um, it's, uh, pretty striking. Um, and, uh, just, I, I think it, it, it kinda, I could say this at every meeting, but it goes without saying. Um, a, a thank you to, uh, our school district, the administrators, teachers and staff for everything they're doing. The fact that our, we're, we're able to, even with everything that's happening, our kids are still in school and, and having real positive experiences. I just think that that's, um, uh, been a Herculean effort, so I just wanted to acknowledge that once again. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Dan.
Picking up on Jay's comment, I, I don't know if everyone's having good experiences. My eleven-year-old has some grievances, but those have, may, may have more to do with Long Division than anything else. Um, first, I, I wanna, uh, take a moment in the report to pay tribute to, um, one of the, uh, volunteers that keep Montpelier going who passed away last week, Mary Nielsen, um, who some of you may or may not know, who was chair of the Green Mount Cemetery Commission for a number of years and active member in, uh, the Montpelier community passed away. Um, when I was on the, when I was the cemetery commissioner, she was chair. Uh, and it was just an absolute pleasure to work with her each and every meeting. Um, a really wonderful, friendly, caring, giving person. Um, she and Corky, uh, were great to spend time and, and talk with. And, you know, it's people like Mary who make Montpelier a wonderful place to live and who, you know, show that service is, is not a drudge or a burden or something that we have to, um, just do as our duty. It's, it's a joy and a pleasure. And, uh, she brought that to her work here. And so, you know, I think we're a, a smaller city as a result of her passing. And, uh, I just wanted to recognize her. Um, the other thing is that I would encourage everyone who has any, uh, funds available to make sure that you spend them downtown at our businesses, to make sure that they do go into the black between now and the end of the year. Um, more that you can spend locally, uh, the more that stays locally. Well, one thing I, I have done work on, on, uh, some economic impacts of local studies, uh, I mean of local spending. And when you spend money in the community, it's not like spending a dollar. It's like spending up to six dollars because that dollar bounces around the local community um, and has impacts well beyond that single purchase of a whoopee cushion at, uh, Woodbury Mountain Toys. Um, it spends, uh, and allows other people to, uh, in, keep their standard of living, keep their business, keep their independence and keep, uh, living in this wonderful community. So, uh, I think those are the two notes that I'll add, so thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Jack.
I guess I'll have to keep an eye open for the whoopee cushions. I didn't realize they had in there. As much time as I've spent there, um, I, I'll pass.
Oh, Lord. Yeah, um, just wanted to let you all know the, um, police review committee met last night. So we're getting up and running and organized, um, so, uh, great to get that group together. And we're mostly focused, uh, in the short term on the membership, so hopefully we'll be getting back to you all soon, uh, with that. Um, and I just wanted to raise, I know there were some emails going around about the homeless shelter and issues. So I don't know if that needs to be on the next city agenda or what, what we're doing. Sounds like some, um, you know, problematic issues going on with the shelter and, and capacity. So just wanted to put that on our, on our list to look into. Um, wanted to confess that I was one of the people that did not give blood, but it's a moment to say thank you to many of the city staff who, when I passed out when I gave blood in October and Bill kindly gave me a ride home. My, I didn't react well to, to my recent one, so thank you to the city staff who took good care of me. In that.
Honored you. Your secret was safe with me.
But, uh, but appreciate everybody who, who did give blood and, um, good old Mary Mello was there. She was like, I volunteer now, standing at the desk instead. I was like, that makes better sense for me. Um, but stay safe, everyone. Follow the, the, the rules that our state's putting out. They're there for a reason and happy Thanksgiving.
Great, thank you. John.
I'm here, I'm here. Sorry, I always press the wrong button. Um, uh, I would just mention a couple of things. Um, uh, one of them is very short and one of them I'll keep very short, uh, just that I am still away. Um, been away for a bit and it's sort of turned into a, uh, an actual quarantine and I need to wait for test results cuz I may have had exposure, so blah, blah, blah. Um, but then I should be back. If I'm lucky, I'll be back Friday, but I'll probably be back Monday and Crystal has been out this week too. She fell ill, which means the two-person operation is now a zero-person operation. So I know there are some frustrated people out there that neither of us are available, but it was just, uh, not foreseeable, unfortunately. Um, another thing I just wanna sort of put in people's minds, um, already looking ahead to the town meeting day election. Um, there, if the expectation is now out there that all are, especially during COVID, that all our elections are gonna be vote by mail, um, the money that facilitated this from the Secretary of State is apparently not available for municipal elections. There has to be something statewide or federal on it. So I have so far failed and I'm about to give up on trying to find grants elsewhere. So I got a recent grant to buy all the Plexiglas and stuff we used in the last election. So there may be more grants out there to allow us to do it again, just on our own. Just, you know, gotta sort of a budget out there, see if we can do the all-male thing ourselves. But that's looking unlikely. So, um, anyways, any ideas on that? There's probably no ideas to be had, but, um, people should probably start preparing across the state in all municipalities for stepping back a bit and having an election more like the August primary, rather than the general election, which unfortunately is going to be a lot more labor-intensive.
Since we're talking about that, I do wanna just point out that it might be worth us, um, considering, uh, adding some funds to the budget specifically for this. Um, we may not have funding to do, um, you know, mail-in voting for this coming town meeting day, but we can plan for future town meeting days. Um, so I just wanna put that on people's radars for, for less than ten thousand dollars, that may be worth it. Um, Connor.
Yeah, John, John, I had a question that came up, uh, this past week. Um, if folks wanna petition something on the ballot for town meeting day, is there any alternative to getting physical signatures that like maybe they pass in the legislature, just like candidates were given, you know, the opportunity?
You know, um, it's this, I hate to, to, to put this in a, such a holding pattern, but we haven't gotten guidance from the Secretary of State yet on this. We're all a little, a little confused as to where that's gonna go and to whether that, you know, before the signature requirements were suspended, which of course made it easy for that huge list of presidential candidates, right? Um, so we don't know what it's gonna be then. I've been asked, I mean, I was asked about this as far back as nearly two months. So I tried to put out to people who've asked me, you know, there may be ways around it. If you're just running for office, you know, you can always get people, you need twenty-five signatures, twenty-five people to download a form all by itself, write it and put it in the mail. Uh, petitions are more complicated. Um, I, the only good answer I came up with, and I'm guessing the Secretary of State will, will cut some slack on this, but given that what they haven't yet, given that we don't know, is, um, it may be possible to hold a couple, like, social distance petition fairs. You know, maybe we get a big space like the auditorium and set up tables. Everybody's got a petition for anything. And you can come up at a distance with masks on and go and sign what you want. Um, I started grasping at straws, but that's all I got right now.
Interesting. Uh, Jack, go ahead.
I, uh, I have answer to that. Uh, I, uh, have also been caught, like Connor, I've been contacted by a constituent asking about petitioning. And so I contacted the, um, Secretary of State's office, the Elections Division. This is what I was calling you about today, John. With regard to petitions for, uh, public office, um, this past fall, they passed a bill before they recessed, removing the signature requirement for petitions for local office. And that was, uh, section one eight two of S three fifty-four. And they did not, uh, remove this, uh, petition requirement for petitioned articles, including social service appropriations. Uh, the League of Cities and Towns has guidance on model, model policies that towns can, uh, can adopt. And so I will forward this email I got to, uh, to you all and we can maybe talk about it because apparently we do have the ability to, uh, to not require a petition to, uh, have one of those, uh, requests be on the ballot. And I know from my own history that there, in the early days of the Housing Trust Fund, there were some years where the, uh, council agreed at our, at our request to put the, uh, appropriation request on the ballot without forcing us to go through the petition process after we but got through a couple of si- of seasons of showing that there was sufficient, uh, support to do that. So I'll send that, that out and, uh, maybe we can have another discussion about it.
Please send me a copy too, cuz when I asked him about this very thing, I was met with silence. And at least one other clerk I talked to about it was too. So, you know, sometimes we have a hard time communicating as well as we should with the Secretary of State.
I'll get that out probably tonight or tomorrow.
Great. All right, uh, Bill.
Sure. So, uh, while we're on that topic, you know, to talk about petitions, I, I would note that there's, there are two different thresholds. The city council can always put an item on the ballot and has done so at request of groups in the past, with Housing Trust Fund. I think one of the more common practices prior years was if somebody had been on, had petitioned to be on the ballot, had received approval of the voters, then the council might say, okay, you don't need to petition again, you know, as long as it's for the same amount. W- one question I think to consider for the council, I don't need to answer it now, but just as we have this conversation going forward is, if we're gonna say, okay, you know, it's a bad year to petition, are we just gonna take every request to put it on? Um, because if we're not, then people still have to make the, you know, whereas if we receive a petition and it's legal, we have to put it on. You know, have the discussion say, we're not gonna put it before the voters. So, you know, if, if I'm an agency and I want money, am I gonna take my chances that the council might say, sorry, we're not putting it on? So I just, we, on the other hand, if the council says, we'll put it on for all askers, we may, we may get groups that we've never heard from before that want money and suddenly they're gonna get on the ballot. So I think it's an, an important distinction. Um, so I, I, I hope there is some solution. I'll add that I heard the Secretary of State on, uh, W D V the other morning or noon or whatever, morning, I guess, talking. And he was talking about potential all-male ballots for town meeting. So I don't know whether they're trying to come up with funding for this or not, but, uh, he was talking about the success of the mail-in ballots now and, you know, they were looking to see if they could replicate it.
So. Well, it's frustrating that they, they communicate with you guys better than me because. That, that wouldn't be available and that I should go on and look for my grants, so.
This was, this was Secretary Condo's talking on W D V to listeners. He wasn't communicating with me. He was talking to anybody who was listening.
Well, he talks to anybody who's listening more than he talks to me.
Doesn't mean it's gonna happen, um, and, you know, just we'll be manufacturing those yes votes in the back room to put them on. Um, more to the point, we've got a couple minor things here. Um, the C I P Committee, uh, we're hoping to have them meet, I can't remember who it is, it's three of you, and I forgot to double-check it before, but you know who you are, right? The three members of the Capital Improvements Plan Committee, we are hoping we could meet, um, on December second and December nine before those two council meetings, five fifteen, five thirty, but we'll send out a reminder tomorrow, uh, checking if that makes work. If not, we'd like, you know, we'd like to have a couple meetings in the next couple weeks to look at what's left of the capital plan. Um, with regard to budget, we are having what we call our Budget Congress starting tomorrow. So we'll see how that goes. Our goal is to get you a draft budget for, or, or proposed budget for December second. So we're about a week early this year. Gives us more time to wring our hands. Finally, um, with, you know, as, as, uh, we, the city clerk has mentioned a few times, uh, chasing people down to sign things and also, um, now with the police station being closed, our finance department has looked into electronic signatures. And we think that is going to be possible. Um, so more to come on that, but we'll probably be buying at least three licenses, one for the clerk. John, you don't know this cuz you weren't here, but for liquor licenses and things, assuming those can be signed electronically. One for Serena to use for warrant stuff and one for Kelly for a sort of emergency warrant. So there'd be three people that would have access, could send out the list of names and all you have to do is click your electronic signature. So that would take care of those things. So and it's secure, there's a whole, so we're, we're, and the licenses aren't very expensive, they're like twenty dollars a month per license, so. Hundred and twenty dollars a year, so three hundred and sixty dollars a year total for three licenses, so. Um, anyway, more to come, details to be determined, but Kelly wanted me to let you know that. Otherwise, happy Thanksgiving also to everyone and, and I hope none of you are traveling.
Yeah, agreed. Uh, anyway, I'm sorry. Well, thank you, everybody. Uh anyway, all right, well, thank you, everybody and uh have an excellent evening, have a good Thanksgiving. And uh we'll we'll see you later on. Uh so uh without objection, we'll call this meeting adjourned.
Great, see you all later.
See you later.